Little butterfly that goes around the bad trailer. Yeah, if you take that out, it could be housing. Okay, so you can, in our preaching, you can pop.
I like how he, I like how he uses the fact that they're building residential in a flood zone is somehow an advantage for him.
Okay.
I'm like, uh, yeah, it's like nobody will build anything there.
Nobody will build anything there.
Yeah.
I think he yells, which ones? So.
Well, I mean, I have a meeting in C-Tech.
The end to timing.
We don't have one though. Okay, we'll do it right now. So, I'd like to call this study session Lakewood City Council for Tuesday, May twenty ninth to order. And the first item of business isn't on the agenda. It's a, the start of the recognition of Alice Bush Week here at the City of Lakewood. Alice, as many of you may know, is not only a longtime Lakewood public servant, she is the longest-serving employee number one, actually was employed by the City of Lakewood before incorporation was official. So, if council would step out on the other side of the table with me and Alice, if you would approach the bench, I didn't ever get to say that because I didn't want to be a judge. We have something for you. There will be more formal things, but from the council, just thank you for your exceptional leadership and commitment to the Lakewood community. From the council, this May twenty ninth, it's not in six point eight. But thank you for all you have done and good luck in your future ventures. So, she's gonna start a new show called DSI Lakewood. She looks for all skeletons wearing. So now we get to the first item on the agenda, an update from Workforce Central, and we have Lyndon Nguyen.
Hi, thank you for having us here, so it's Lyndon Nguyen and the entourage. So, just real quickly, I'm Lyndon Nguyen, CEO of Workforce Central, and we are the workforce board for Pierce County. So, our job in life is to work with our payroll system, our higher ed systems, our business community, organized labor, anyone who cares about talent development. We bring them together and figure out what our issues are from a workforce talent development standpoint in this county. And then look at strategies to come together and deploy and to make sure that we have folks who need talent and training can have that. And then get connected to jobs that are open and available, created by our businesses. Today, I'm not gonna do most of the talking, we actually have Dorian Simon. Well, you have two of your youth council members are here, they're gonna be doing the talking. I'm just gonna be the support, if they need me at all, they probably won't need me. But Dorian Simon, he is a junior from Lakes High School, first year serving on the youth council. And I'll tell you, he's got a, what do you have going on? There's a test, there's a physics test Thursday that he needs to prepare for, but he's here. And he's got a STEM fair report that he needs to put in by Thursday, so just to share that he's making this a priority and thank you.
And he got three first place medals at the state track.
Yay, congrats. And we have Natalie Cruz, who's a senior at Clover Park High School, first year also on the youth council. And guess what she's missing tonight? Her senior awards night where she's gonna get seven awards to be here. She's here instead, this topic is important to her.
Dedication.
And then it's finals week, so there's all kinds of tests happening, right, as she prepares to finish her high school year here. And then I've got Christian Cable, my communications director, here with us as well. So, I wanna thank both of you guys for being here and thank you for having us here to present to you. So, you guys take it away.
So, at this point, I'm gonna exercise a point of personal privilege, and you're gonna tell us what awards you're missing.
Oh, okay, so.
And as an old track coach and official, you're gonna tell us what your events were in your times.
Okay.
Okay? So, awards first.
So, I looked at the brochure and it was one for being in honor roll. It was one for the department award of JRTC, and then it was the certificate of completion for JRTC. It was the community schools scholarship award, and then it was S two S, which we're getting something to wear for our captain gown. And then it was also National Honor Society, which is good.
Fantastic. So, you had a, if you went there, you'd have to have a wheelbarrow.
Maybe.
And how were things about to hold?
Yes, so I'll tell you.
Wow.
I'll tell you my, my final times, I ran the finals. So, I ran the one hundred meter dash and I ran a ten point five six. I ran the four by one hundred meter relay and we were able to run a forty one point six eight. And then I ran the two hundred meter dash and I ran a twenty one point five flat.
That's amazing. I know what those times mean, those really fast. It was, I, the only time I was in a race that was that fast, I saw people going away from me. You're one of those guys.
All right, let's get right.
Now, that, that's my agenda, you know, tell us what you came here to tell us.
Yes, so here is our, our issue. We have these nine thousand online job postings, each posting holding numerous job opportunities and duties. So, on top of these nine thousand job, online job postings, we have tens of thousands of jobs needed to be filled. But, we have unemployment, which is at a high of five point eight percent. And we have over fifteen thousand young adults sixteen to twenty four who are not involved in the community, not going to school, and don't have a job. That could be filling up these tens of thousands of opportunities in the following sectors such as construction, healthcare, advanced manufacturing, transportation, and military and defense.
So, there creates a mismatch with that information because there are jobs available for these disconnected youth. But sometimes they don't have the experience that they, that is needed for those jobs, or they're in a situation that doesn't help them to get where they want to be. So, there are workers available, but there are also ways that we can be creative and collaborate with the community to find out solutions to help these, these people. They're in solutions where they're, sorry, they're in situations where they maybe can't get out of. And that's what Workforce Central is trying to help them get that experience, get that resource that they need in order to get where they wanna be.
So, we have these two opportunities to try to fill this gap between these jobs and these disconnected youth. So, our first opportunity is this summer employment program, which is really for priority on these disconnected young adults that are sixteen four, sixteen twenty four, that aren't participating in school, that aren't, that aren't working, aren't involved in the community. And our second opportunity is the pre-apprenticeship center, which is going to help, which is open to specifically for young adults, but we do want any members of Lakewood, any citizens of Lakewood to be participating in it. And that's gonna be specifically for construction jobs.
Okay, so the summer employment program model is essentially helping young adults find, well, actually, helping young adults develop the skills that they need for these jobs that can't just be taught in the classroom. Some of these include, like it shows here, personal skills like integrity, develop the dependability, adaptability, and professionalism. People skills, teamwork, communication, respect, applied knowledge, reading, writing, mathematics, science, technology, and critical thinking, and then also workplace skills, planning, organization, problem solving, decision making. All of these that are needed in the workplace, but that schools don't teach in the classroom. This is one way that they can actually get a hands-on learning that is one-on-one with them and teaching, teaching them what needs to be done. So, with the summer program, summer employment is doing is helping them find these skills. They, sorry, they help, they help, uh, sorry, they hope.
Expose them.
Yes.
To encourage and industries.
Right, and they have that experience after they do this, and they might love it, they might find, find it super useful, they might hate it. But either way, this, the experience of their learning is both valuable because if they love it, they know what they wanna do. They, they wanna pursue it, they wanna continue on. But if they hate it, then it's something, okay, well, I really don't wanna do that job now, now, now I know. And it's something to start up because disconnected youth, a lot of us don't know what we wanna do after high school, we're just going along the flow and, you know, and that's, that's something to help them. And with those high numbers, it's something that Lakewood needs because we're trying to help, so. So, the model would be eight weeks paid part-time employment. It would be twenty-five hours on the job and five hours in the classroom. With the classroom, it'll be mock interviews, it'll be with the employer, it'll be going through interviews, it'll be going through, you know, how to dress, how to be on time, how to, all of these things that you need to get a job or to, you know, fulfill that job requirements. Also, you'll get hands-on training with twenty-five hours on the job that will help them, so. So, if we invest a hundred thousand dollars in this, thirty Lakewood youth adults will get part-time summer employment, twenty-five hours per week. This is useful because with those high numbers that we were looking at in the first slide, this is one way that, um, this is one way that we can lower the numbers of unemployment rates in Lakewood. So, with having a hundred thousand dollars from Lakewood, it goes into wages for them. So, we do ask the private industry for dollar, for dollar match for the double participation. And it's also a three-year commitment, so it's not just the industry saying, okay, yes, we wanna, you know, participate for one year, and then a lot of them drop. So, three years, they'll be committed, we'll have people, we'll have industries that wanna develop within our, our central, right?
Now to discuss the construction trades. So, construction projects are growing by three point six percent each year through twenty twenty-three. And on top of that, within these next ten years, twenty-three percent of the people who are already in construction are gonna be retiring. So, we have this really important trade that needs jobs to be filled. And there aren't enough people with the technical and essential schools for this job. And it has good wages of near sixty thousand dollars as a Pierce County average. And for carpenters, it's fifty-four thousand, sheet metalworkers, we have fifty-eight thousand, structural and iron steelworkers, upwards of seventy-five thousand. So, in this pre-apprenticeship, it'll have an eleven-week curriculum, and in the first week, it'll be work readiness skills that they'll be learning, such as showing up on time, having the right clothing, developing their interpersonal skills. And then the next ten weeks is gonna be developing the skills they need for construction. And that's gonna, that's gonna be where they're gonna begin their certifications, the forklift certification, lacquer certification, industrial first aid certification, et cetera. And this pre-apprenticeship will help them get in two paths, either an apprenticeship in construction, or they're just gonna go straight into work. So, our role for this pre-apprenticeship is to raise five hundred thousand dollars. One hundred thousand from the county, one hundred thousand from the City of Tacoma, one hundred thousand from the construction industry. And then Workforce Central, we know that we're gonna be putting a hundred thousand into this. And we would love consideration of the City of Lakewood to give us fifty thousand. And this will guarantee that we'll have thirty-three participants annually from Lakewood participating in this pre-apprenticeship to fit the need of this growing trade for construction. And although it is open up for anyone in the Lakewood community to participate, we do have this focus on the disconnected youth sixteen to twenty-four that are not in school, not in college, or not, they don't have a job. And they talked to us, the Lakewood Student Youth Council, about how could we connect, connect these youth to the, to this growing trade, this amazing trade that is, that's very promising. So, we suggested that through word of mouth, coming to our school, make sure it goes passed on, and then through paid advertising, advertise on TV, radio, social media, Instagram, Snapchat. And then post at where our teens are hanging out these days at the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club. And then kind of where troubled teens would, would be in, in jails and these detention centers. So, are there any questions that you guys have for us?
Any questions, council? Mr. Whalen?
Well, thank you both, all three of you, for coming in, it's very interesting, I just have a couple of questions. Anytime we have new programs coming in, which are very valuable, I always wonder about where the gaps are existing. So, does the school district do any sort of home act or their DECA club type things, and do any of these sort of skills training? That would be my first question. And then with regard to some of the work that's gonna be done, does Clover Park Tech offer some of those skills so that the work, if funded, could be done through an existing organization like Clover Park Tech? Or could they create a development program, or have you already thought of that?
So, for the two opportunities, the, the summer job, you know, Mayor, ex-Mayor Strickland started that about five years ago. To make the opportunities available to Tacoma young adults, so that's been going on for a few years. Well, we would love to see that opportunity for more young adults in Pierce County, not just City of Tacoma, and so we'd like to include Lakewood in that. In terms of the, in terms of the pre-apprenticeship center, Bates Technical College actually has a tool center that we started with them years ago with this concept of having this pre-apprenticeship center to prepare folks who aren't ready to go into the apprenticeship program. Not everyone can go to the door and then get in, right? There's folks with barriers, they have to have time to work those out, they need to know how to use hand tools. We have adults nowadays, I don't know if there's not, I have a hammer, I don't know. You have some power tools, you get certifications, and so, while Bates has this program, it, it's so grant-funded dependent that it goes up and down, it is unstable. And so, the five hundred thousand dollars is the base that we need to have every year. And if grants come in, great, increase capacity, and when they go away, you're back to, you're a foundation and it's stable. The other thing we need to do is get with the JATCs, the Joint Apprenticeship Training Councils, and say, we want you to serve an advisory board, endorse this program. And any graduate that comes out who don't wanna go to the, the work right away track and wanna get into a JATC, we want you to give them special consideration to get in front of the line because they're coming with knowledge and certifications that the person off the street wouldn't have, and so why wouldn't you want them? So, that, that is absent right now, so we need to develop that. But if that, I mean, we don't know if it's gonna be at Bates, it could be at Clover Park, it could be wherever, but certainly working with our, our community technical colleges is always on our mind. Never wanna duplicate, if resources are to leverage, yes, we'll go there.
Got it.
So, maybe the hard question is, I have seen the plethora of job training programs, and the federal government probably has seventy. And when you describe the construction program, it's the same as Goodwill's Youth Bill, maybe not quite as long. But where it's, I think theirs is a thirty-week program with hands-on training, with Habitat, get your GED at the same time, same target, looking for the same construction jobs. Has there been any effort to survey the community for which programs exist and how you can create some synergy rather than trying to start up something that's independent?
There is no, in Pierce County, there is no pre-apprenticeship center that takes in young adults and adults. And so, as Darian says, it's, you know, while the focus is on disconnected young adults and the opportunity is with Youth Bill, but that's grant-funded through Department of Labor too. It's, it's good for a few years and you have to renew, so it's not stable as, as the thing that we should have in the county to address the growth in construction. It doesn't take in adults, you know, so there's an age limit there. And so, we are absent really a viable, sustainable pre-apprenticeship center that offers, again, that kind of training and certification.
But whether that's, that's a Department of Labor grant, and can we find a way to enhance that? Because this, what suggests here for funding sources is a, is perhaps even less stable, it's asking like four different governmental entities to make grants instead of.
And we're asking for, yeah, multiple years. You're right, yeah, I mean.
So, it's the same kinda thing?
Correct, yes, yeah. And again, it, just like how I responded, we will look for ways to work with Bates, because again, they've got the tool center concept right now. So, it's, it just needs a bit of beefing up because it's open to young adults and adults. We would certainly reach out to Goodwill to see how we can, can leverage and integrate and coordinate.
Yeah, 'cause I've, I've actually, my prejudice is I was, it's been a while, but I was on the Goodwill board for seven, eight years. And saw some amazing, you know, the, the concept is great, 'cause I've seen some amazing examples of a troubled youth who doesn't have any direction finding a way through construction, and some of them are working here with Tucci and Sons, where they found some great employees through that. And, and it works.
Well, we've got fifteen thousand three hundred young adults in Pierce County who are disconnected, with the definition sixteen to twenty-four, not working, not in school, not doing a whole lot. And so, if we can increase capacity, yes, of the Youth Bill program, and offer something for the adults as well, that is the ideal.
And one of the things, just anecdotally, on the recruitment, you, of, your examples had, you know, advertising and going to schools and normal courses. When that program started up, there was some difficulty in finding the people and connecting them, and it was, the most successful thing turned out to be someone who went out on the streets to places where kids hung out. One was a barber shop, all places. And it, they came through there and finding the guys who weren't doing much during the day and soliciting their interest, so.
Yeah, no, there is a program that was funded by Department of Labor Research Project, and you're right, you gotta go to the skateboarding park, you gotta go to the tattoo parlor, you gotta go with grandma. Grandma, do you have a grandchild sitting around on your couch? Bring him to us, or tell us when that kid's hanging out, so you do have to go.
Are the employers on board too? Would they be ready, willing, and able to interview and bring on young workers?
That is, yes, that is the model. We have, we have businesses out there ready to go. They, they, they fund or they host a young adult or young adults annually, but we would want to see if we can bring more Lakewood businesses on board. Hire locally, train locally, be part of the solution locally.
Mr. Reser.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. I have some experience with this group of programs over the years at different times in my work at Bates. And the pre-construction apprentice program, the strength of it, it has two strengths that make the participants in it successful. And one is, is that it is actually put together with, by folks in the Joint Apprenticeship Training Committees, folks from the unions that have worked, all designed the curriculum and are, and stay engaged with it. And a number of the unions have signed articulation agreements that if you are a graduate, you will get a priority consideration for an apprenticeship position in, in, in any one of a number of the unions. It has fluctuated in terms of the number of cohorts that have been offered each year. And, and as pointed out, it's because of the instability of the funding. In recent years, it's primarily served City of Tacoma, young people, because the City of Tacoma has been the most consistent contributor to the funding. It hasn't been exclusive that, and when I say City of Tacoma, the actually, it was more, it was kind of targeted at the Tacoma Public Utilities footprint, which is slightly different than the, than, than, than the city. But it, it, it has, you know, an eighty-five to ninety percent graduate and go-to-work model. And that's primarily because of the strength of the connection with the unions and the fact that the program has gone through a rather significant vetting process with the Department of Labor and Industries. That sort of, that, that sort of puts a seal on, on pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship programs in the state certifying them to be able to go and do that. And that means something to employers when someone came out of that program as opposed to the other. I, I also have some experience even earlier when, with, with the Youth Bill program and Goodwill. And the two populations are slightly different. The, the Goodwill was targeted primarily at, at young people who, for some reason, hadn't gotten finished with high school and didn't have their GED. And, and so, a component of that program, one of the reasons it was longer, was it was also designed to get them past that hurdle as well as be prepared in a, in a construction-based piece to be able to go and do that. So, I, I think the, 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 the model is not that different than some human services, things that we do of where, yeah, if, 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 if. To the extent that Lakewood has money in the game, there is some reciprocal commitment to ensure that there is a certain level of service that's provided to Lakewood residents, being able to go and do that. I also know that this is an odd time to look for funding in twenty eighteen because we're a biennial budget person, and, and all that's left in our biennial budget is, is scraps to finish through the next six months. And, but we are going into a twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty model, which is the, you know, of a place to look to, to consider where it fits in our budgeting and our priority pieces to be able to go and do that. I did have one question for the two folks here, that it tends to be people my age or approaching my age that, that make that list of saying, young people, you know, lack discipline, lack integrity, lack some of those things. And I, I guess is, that your impression of the disconnect, of the disconnected group of your peers?
Yeah, I would say that, although if, I would say that I would have, I would refer to local schools because I've been in tune in school and, and fully in my career. But for the disconnected youth, they would need probably development in those categories because they're disconnected. because they're disconnected. It's been a while since they've been able to interact with people in a proper fashion or going to school or being in a job or having internship or anything. So I think it would be important to try to rebuild those, those skills for them.
Yeah, so I know at my school, we do have like some training, EDECA, or DECA, that, you know, it's, it's building on what they want to do either business-wise or, you know, engineering. We have MESSA, which is engineering, math, science and something else. I forgot the A. But those, those are taught within our schools. But given that the age limit goes up to twenty-five years old, it's been five, six years maybe that they haven't been in school. They haven't, you know, if they haven't held a job for that long. They haven't been able to manage themselves in an appropriate and business management way. So I think being able to develop those skills is one way to actually fulfill getting a job, getting, you know, out of the disconnected definition.
Well, I certainly understand that you can, becoming disconnected then creates other skills or, or, or the skills that go away, you know. In your case, I'm sure that a lot of these professional attributes and skills are developed through your JRTC. Participation and yours through your participation in athletics. And, and we, we certainly hope that, that, that your being on our youth council is contributing to that so that, you know, you know, you're, you're, you're sort of the opposite of disconnected as we. You know, like to have to be able to go and do that. I guess.
Mr. Bokey. So the summer job program, and if you can take this, I'm, I'm not sure what kind of businesses. So they go out to different businesses. How are you placing these folks and do any of them end up with full-time work? Or at the end of the summer, are they back to being disconnected?
So you really take it from a young adult standpoint. What are you interested in? So what we want to do is have a whole basket full of different options. And so when young adults come in, we don't just say, well, you're gonna just go here. There's an assessment of what their interest areas are, you know, to help them sort of hone that down. And then there's a match made. But they go through an interview process, just like everybody else. You need to pick three options and you're gonna interview. And the employer actually gets to choose. So they have to practice the that and then actually get to do it. What was the other question? The, so.
So what do they do?
Full-time, so at the end of the summer, some young adults have been offered full-time jobs if they're graduating. And if you're going to school, you can't really go to school and get a full-time job. So if they're eighteen, they're senior, they're done and they're not, they're looking for a full-time summer gig while they wait for their post-secondary ed connection. And that's what we want to encourage too through the summer program. High school is, that's not the end. There has to be some post-secondary education. It doesn't have to be a baccalaureate pathway, there's other pathways for you. Some, some get out from part-time jobs. And then for, for some, maybe they just don't want it, they're done. Okay, great, thank you for this great experience, I now have to focus on my school.
Good. Mr. Boss.
Thank you, it was good to see you.
Hi.
Thank you for coming. I'm impressed with you guys. You, you are great leaders, I, I really appreciate that. But I wanted to offer a resource for you, for your apprenticeship. Are you familiar with or do you know Mark Martinez?
Oh, Mark, he's the Southern Workforce Development Council, yes.
He's the boss.
Yes, he's mine in for, to get some funding from the, the labor side.
Okay.
And industry as well.
And he has a program that he put on in November, I think it is, where he bring in a lot of young students to do certain jobs. And is that the Fairgrounds in New York?
Well, we help coordinate that career day. Every year, two thousand young adults convene to have hands-on experience and exposure. The problem with that for me, and I challenge my staff, great, you go on a field trip, you get excited about maybe being a welder or an electrician someday. And then you go back to your school. There is then no connection after that. I mean, they really then need to have a moment to experience it and then be guided on the next steps. So, great, it's great. Ten years it's been going on and we're, we're engaged with that. But we're missing that bridge after that.
Does he teach classes in the apprenticeship? Does he?
Not anymore. He does more of the business side of.
Well, I would suggest you do talk to a couple of technical college.
Great, yes, yes.
If there are more, more questions, I'd like to thank you for the presentation. And I think it's something we can certainly think about in our next budgeting cycle to see what's developed and, and how that might fit into our programs. And if you, and if you participate in that, it seems like you find, you, you mentioned, you see something that, you find something that you like or learn what you don't like for more years than I can count. My kind of surprise, strange interview question hiring people has always been, what's the worst job you ever had? And it tells you a lot about somebody mainly that they stuck it out, what they're willing to do. And it gives, if they, or you might find out that they never lifted a finger. So you find out a lot of things from it, but you, it, it does have value having the worst job.
I'm interviewing two people tonight, I'm gonna ask that, I'm gonna add that to my list. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. So I think actually Wayland's, Wayland's, but the worst job is trying to get his aide to find him the, the Agath.
Guest, guest, guest house, hot shower where he's on maneuvers and drinking. I need, I need a new one.
I can tell you that the aide's worst job ever, ever had.
We now move to a joint planning commission meeting. Come on down.
So, everybody, come on up.
Come on down, guys.
Are we getting a slideshow?
No slideshow?
We getting a slideshow?
No slideshow.
Nope.
It's for the young kids. The youth.
The youth. Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm Don Daniels, Chair of the Planning Commission. And we have, might as well say who you are.
James Guerrero.
Nancy Echols.
Gotti Cola Lafferty.
Paul Agar.
Thank you, and Mr. Estrado is excused. He's at the Lakeview Light and Power Board Meeting tonight, so he's, that's where he's at. So thank you. We'll just have a couple of review of some of the accomplishments that the Fine Planning Commission has did over the last few months since January. We did look at the two thousand seventeen Annual Housing Report. It is something that we've accomplished. We also sent our recommendations to the Council regarding the SWAT zoning adjustment that you guys have heard and talked. In February, we also reviewed the proposed marijuana regulations. And also since then, has sent you our recommendations. And you have made a decision a few weeks ago. In March, moving up to March, we had a Adult Family Home Ordinance Number Six Eighty. And that was just defining, defining the Adult Family Home Business and Enhanced Service Facilities, affirming that the Adult Family Homes serve persons with functional limitations and prohibiting the conversion of an Adult Family Home Business into an Enhanced Service Facility. We allowed the, we recommended that the allow, allowing Enhanced Service Facilities in certain commercial zoning districts rather than just spread throughout all of the zones of specifically in residential areas. And they're subject to a conditional use permit and prohibiting Enhanced Service Facilities in all remaining zoning districts. April, we reviewed the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. And now, kind of moving till next month, we have quite a few things on our agenda as well. We've discussed and listened to public hearings regarding the Downtown Subarea Plan, Use Plan and the New Form-Based Zoning. In the next couple of weeks, we will be reviewing that, defining more in detail and then sending our recommendations to the Council. And anytime, please, if you wish to enhance any of these things, fellow commissioners here, more than welcome to. Don't let me be the only one sitting up here. Any suggestions or ideas? In June as well, this next month will be the Downtown Subarea Planned Action Ordinance. Like I mentioned, as we'll be sending something to the Council. June is also the Downtown Subarea Plan, EIS. We're also haven't as of yet, but we will be looking at the JLU's implication criteria and seeing if there's any major changes. Mr. Weber, he's way back there, okay. In June as well, I guess we're gonna review more of the Adult Family Homes' recommendations for possible dispersal. And I think that's coming back to us. We have heard about that as of right now. So I think that's coming back to us on our agenda coming up in June. The Sign Code Revision Regulations is gonna be coming to us. I will make a note, I was, on the last one, it was the Planning Advisory Board. I was, Mr. Wayland, I believe, might have been in that hole. I would only suggest when we're looking at this that maybe the possibility of, when we look at this thing and send our recommendations, the code enforcement side is critical on what the regulations are gonna be. We've seen so far, since the last revision of the Sign Code, myself personally, the code enforcement kind of goes by the wayside in more and more signs that might have been not legal at that time. But it just, once your neighbor business starts with one type of sign, then they all, so that, the enforcement side is critical side of what the regulations are, to my personal opinion, have seen. The two thousand eighteen annual, in, in January of two thousand nineteen, two thousand eighteen Annual Housing Report. And in April, a year in two thousand nineteen, we'll review again the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. In May of two thousand nineteen, we're getting back the Shoreline Management Plan update. We kind of heard a little bit about that in our last meeting to revise some new regulations or some new things coming down regarding the Shoreline Management. And then in August two thousand nineteen, Title Eighteen A, I believe that is. There's no A there. Eighteen A Update, which we have been comprised and informed about that. But it's quite daunting, large, as you know. So we'll be preparing a community outreach plan, updating the code sections, revise current air corridor regulations, right? That AC, all these abbreviations, you know, sometimes, so. Air corridors, enhance the predictability in permitting, improve the readability of it and increase the accountability on that whole Eighteen A. And then in August of two thousand nineteen, we have any two thousand nineteen Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Amendments that might come before us as we do typically in, in August. And then continue on in the JLU's location, which might cross over with the Eighteen A Updates as well. So that's kind of a fast review of what the Planning Commission has worked on. And staff has done a great job as keeping this tasks outlined and making sure we have a full agenda when we convene. So any bullets that you want to fire at us?
Mr. Wayland. No bullets to fire, just thank you for the work. But are there any holes in the work plan that you would like to address or, or not? Things that you think about that we haven't kind of powered down to you? You think would be important to kind of take a look at?
Anyone else? Kind of mentioned already my thing about the Sign Code and, and the enforcement kind of is to keep in mind when it ever does come. Now, Mr. Guerrero.
Right, so when you have the, the Subarea Plan on the agenda, then I would like our group to have it for a while. There, there's a lot of pieces of it that have impact to my work and, and it's just, it's, it's, the complexity of it is such that I'd like us to have it for a while and really understand it, make sure we're making good recommendations moving forward.
You said hastily, and, and Mr. Guerrero brings up a good point. Some of us aren't in that architectural realm. So he brings up some great questions to present to the staff and have the staff come back and kind of massage it. So he's given quite an outline of some considerations on that, that we might restrict this and really we're, we're hindering possibilities of some architectural design, you know, roof lines and height and all those type of things. So I think he brings out some great suggestions and ideas. Same type of thing, not, not having it so restrictive that we're not thinking about the future or the possibilities of other type of designs. Anything else for, that you would like to see differently or added on or change or anything, Mr. Wakeman?
Well, I, you know, I think the, the Business District Plan that's being worked on, I think, is really good. You know, I mean, when we start to look at the Growth Management Act, we have to figure out a way to put more people in this community where you don't have places to put them, right? So verticals, the options, so the, the, the commercial residential mix sounds good. The dilemma, you know, that we're working with, everyone's working with is, how do you have a livable community when you, when you go that way? Also, I think there's some good thoughts, I mean, some walking paths. I think that's looked at, you know, Sealy Lake, certainly there's some things that could be done there. And the other thing that people have talked about a lot is, you know, what are some destination places when you come to walk? You know, if you ride your bikes into the community, where would you go? Certainly, certainly, you know, there's some comment about you like to have high-end restaurants. I don't know whether, whether that would work. There's some people who would like that. But there's certainly lots of places to eat now, you know. You know, depending on what you like. And so coming into the community is good in that. You know, having, having worked on the non-motorized plan, seeing some of the stuff that's happening around Gravel Lake is encouraging. I, I, I mean, we, whether you liked Chambers Bay Walk Trail, I mean, having, being able to walk around Gravel Lake where it's safe will, I think, accommodate some of that. Will people use some of the coffee shops and things around here when that happens? I would think that would happen. So to me, it's nice that we're sitting down and talking about it, putting some ideas together and see what'll happen.
Yeah, Mr. Weber, you have any? Mr. Weber, you have any?
All I can think is that maybe our work is a little too light. Well, I agree with Mr. Guerrero, that we, I would like to see us have a little bit more time with the sub-area plan. It's, it's getting pretty complicated, and we're looking at changing basically the entire image, entire look of the city by what we're doing here, and so, you know, I think we have an opportunity to do it right, and, and so I think it probably might take a little bit more time to do that. But then, working that in with what really are two other, you know, huge things that we have to do, which is 18A, which is, you know, basically rewriting that code, and then, of course, now the sign code, it's been kind of pushed down to us, is also gonna be a huge deal. So, yeah, I think we got a lot cut out for us, and, but, hey, we can handle it.
Yeah, we get paid a lot, and, you know, we appreciate your doubling our salaries again for 2018, I, I appreciate that.
You aren't done with your presentation.
Oh, I got more questions.
Nobody's suggested Bavarian Village.
Oh, Bavarian.
Mr. Ressler.
Well, I am well aware of how hard and at what level of detail you work, okay? And that's what the community needs, from you. And so, now, it's the council appreciates it, I think the folks in the community do or certainly should, that your work works. Kind of falls into two groups of things, there are some things that come before you that are on their way to us, that have a time limit, there, there's, like, some things have to be done by a certain date, the shoreline management program is coming up, it has a suspense, the, the annual transportation improvement program has suspended. But other things that, while there are, the timelines are sort of wishes, but that it certainly, in terms of your discussion, to say that if you feel you need time to do quality work on things that don't truly have a timeline that's imposed legislatively or some way to get it done, you know, I think that we understand that, and, and, you know, all the work that you do, quite honestly, is work that doesn't clog up the council's calendar in time, because, because we can pretty well learn to rely upon the level of work that you have, and we can look at it at a different level. Later on in our agenda this evening, there is a discussion about the changing of the timelines on comprehensive plan amendments. You know, and, and, and really, the change of it is primarily because they always conflicted with, it came to the fore, just as budgeting was coming to the fore, it was hard to do that. But there's a front-end piece to that, that wasn't in your work plan, and that, for many years, though, we've seen that most of the amendments for comprehensive plan have been initiated by citizens, or they've been initiated by staff. Yet, both the city council and the planning commission have authority and a role to be able to be caretakers of the comprehensive plan and to propose, you know, amendments. And so, there, but there is a window by which you need to do that, or for that process to work, there's a window for us, and a window for you, and so, I would suggest that at some point in your work plan, where there is the window of where you are considering whether for a given cycle, you want to propose anything, so to get in the queue to have the necessary public hearings and be reviewed and looked at, that you may want to add that to, to, to the work plan in the appropriate month, that, I think it's gonna be August or September.
Yeah, August of 2019.
Well, August of 2019 is when the next group of things are going to be acted on. But somewhere in this year, in 2018, in August or September, is going to be the window that if the council, the planning commission, the public, the city staff wants to put proposed plans for the top plan on the table, an amendment, that's when you would have to do that, and that's one of the roles, authorities that you legislate, we have.
Yep. Yes.
So I feel you're paying on the downtown plan, because we've, on the positive side, we've taken in so much community input. I mean, just about everybody's been asked in their design, and then asked again. The bad news is, there's nothing you can do that's gonna please every single person who wrote a plan. But I also think that that, I think it's been well done, personally, because I've seen some people in action who I think really came up with great ideas. But somebody's gotta put all those ideas into a format that makes sense and is achievable. And so, you've got a number of competing interests, right, on land that we do not own. So, I, you know, take, take as much time as you need, because once it's done, then we have to start trying to figure out what we're gonna do with it, and there's some, some major issues involved and potentially a lot of money, so. I think I mentioned that to you last year, with 18A.
Yeah.
When I said, go ahead, take your time. I'll be honest with you, didn't expect August 2019. Anyway, it is what it is, form-based, form-based, what's it called? Form-based zoning is something new to us, so, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of work, so good luck.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Will we have a joint meeting with the planning commission on the sub-area planning process at some point, or is it just gonna be bounced from them to us without that interaction? That might be a good thing to have.
Mr. Bueller? We did that a couple, what are your suggestions in that regard?
I'm sorry, I can't hear the question.
Something about, it would be, I think, helpful to have a joint meeting at some point after the planning commission is done chewing on the sub-area plan, and before it's tossed to us.
That's fine.
I mean, that would be helpful.
Yeah, if they could do a presentation of their recommendation to us, as opposed to just passing it and the spilted.
And then it has some interactivity.
Format of an ordinance or a resolution.
Right now, the commission is scheduled for further review and possible action on June 6th. It sounds like from this meeting, the commission maybe should take some more time on that. And then, the next meeting will be June 18th, and then the next commission meeting after that's actually July 4th, so that's not gonna work. But maybe sometime in July, we could have a joint meeting with the city council, only to talk with the manager about scheduling, is that certainly a possibility?
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful.
Thanks.
No, overall, then, yeah, thanks, it's, it's been great.
So, you got a busy work plan?
Yes.
And we really appreciate all you do, and you will get that doubling up.
You promised me every year, and I'm still waiting. No, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, we appreciate your thank you.
Yeah, there we go.
No, citation.
Citation.
So now we move to a review of the 2019 comprehensive plan amendments. Mr. Bueller? Amendment schedule, I should say.
Mayor and council, you have a memo before you that talks about a proposed schedule for the comprehensive plan 2019 amendments. Basically, application process is, in essence, four parts. An application process, which begins in August of this year, wherein private applicants can make application, as well as the planning commissions gets the opportunity, staff gets the opportunity, city council gets the opportunity, and at the planning commission level, they'll also will give for an opportunity for the general public to make amendments. And then, that comes back to the city council, September, October-ish, in that time where we begin to finalize what the applications would look like. And then, that's followed by an analysis piece where we go in and go through the findings section, write the reports, do the environmental review, and then bring it back to the planning commission and city council for action. The dates take you out for a period of year, but depending upon the applications themselves, it's possible perhaps to speed that up. I would also mention of the environmental review process, if we end up with lots and lots of amendments, that could add another step in the review process, and so I just bring that to your attention. Just very briefly, why we're doing it this way, in the past, the council ends up with all these amendments at the end of the year, and the council's schedule in November, December gets really tight, and the opportunity here is to afford the council an opportunity to spread the work a little bit better throughout the remainder of the year. Also listed in the, in the memo, is a list of potential city-initiated amendments that staff is considering. I bring this to your attention just to give you the information upfront, when asking for the council to get into detail on that this evening, but you get an idea of, of some of the things that we're looking at. And I've also included copies of the applications, so you're aware of what we're asking applicants to submit as a part of their application. With that, Mr. Mayor, that ends my, my presentation.
Questions for Mr. Bueller? Mr. Whelan?
Do you anticipate much by way of city-initiated amendments this year? One wonders, after 20 years of cityhood, how much more you could change, but.
I, I think there are some issues in the Woodbrook neighborhood.
Okay.
With the industrial development, the ongoing desire for increased industrial capacity, a lot of spec-
With regard to the residential uses over there?
While speculation is going on at the moment, because there's just no industrial land available, and that combined with new interchanges, make for a very attractive site, particularly in regards to its proximity to the port, that has its own set of problems, because every time we start talking about industrial zoning and housing in, in Woodbrook, we always end up with some, some issues. There's a lot of speculation going on on Murray Road about convenience commercial, there may be some private initiated applications, but some of the single-family residential that's there now does need to be looked at, as well as this one loose piece of a, of quasi-public institutional that's not gonna work anymore with the district scaling is proper. And then, a lot of requests for, you know, people wanting to change the zoning at the interchanges in Delaware, more so at Berkeley than at Thorn Lane. Everyone's anticipating increased commercial development, how much more commercial development can we have? Staff is looking at that going, well, it's not quite timely yet, because the final designs haven't really been approved, although we know the general alignment, but then how much on commercial creep do you want to go into existing residential neighborhoods? So, there's some issues there that need to be looked at. On the long term, the, the city of Lakewood, staff has had some concerns about the existing level of strip commercial along arterial quarters, it's not working very well. We're not ready to come back with that in 2019, but that is something that staff would like to take a look at. Also, we're trying to juggle our assignments in the cop plan area, along with other assignments we have in the department, so recognizing that, we'll, we'll come forward with an appropriate number of amendments that we can handle for the year.
Is this something that we can do that would address having used car lots on every?
We are going to address used car lots as a part of a zoning change amendment, either as a part of Title 18A or as a comprehensive plan amendment process. I would also like to let you know that the Country Club is likely to submit a zoning map amendment this year, it's not a comprehensive plan amendment, but a map amendment, so that should be coming forward this fall.
Oh, that's for the housing?
The proposed housing at the intersection of the Country Club Drive and Gravel Lake Drive, and that's, would also be proposed as a PDD, it's on future date. There's a lot of discussion about that, and how to limit impacts, and not have increased transportation problems on Gravel Lake Drive, so a lot of things sort of brewing in the background.
This would hold here.
So we already have a problem. We, we zone, we zone, we did a flood map, and then we didn't rezone down to a level that would be probably appropriate for a flood map, and we have somebody who wants to build a very large apartment building, his grandfather did it clearly. Is this an area, especially, I tie in the Springbrook area, where we should downzone, it's industrial across the street, I mean, but we've got kind of interspersed high-density residential, which, really from a public policy standpoint, you shouldn't put into flood areas now, where we've got somebody else who wants to build a new flood area. Should we be looking at that area to try to prevent high-density residential flood zones?
That's something that the council should look at, yes. But that's ultimately a decision that you're going to have to render, you have some vacant lots right now, where people are pursuing higher density or trying to build to the current density, they're having some problems getting the, getting there because of some of the engineering standards, they're in the process of revising plans, you can build to the higher density, whether or not the council wishes to use the floodplain rules and regulations to reduce densities entirely within your discretion.
Yeah, I'd be interested in looking at that, too, whether, where, particularly with large-end developed tracks and floodplain, it could be light industrial with fill, and seem to be more appropriate than high-density residential. And also, one thing you brought up, we might want to spend a little more time on, is that design develops, is at Berkeley interchange, because that truly change, is gonna change the character of the area, and so, our chance to, and, except for the newer fast-food convenience outlets there, everything there is ripe for redevelopment from an economic standpoint. So, this would be our one chance to overlay a plan, and enhance the neighborhood. Mr. Ressler?
Yeah, I, I think that the, the, the area in Springbrook that's now in the floodplain, you know, when we rezoned a number of parcels there to be suitable for light industrial commercial use, we didn't really look at the big picture, we only looked at, this is what the county owns, so this is what we're going to rezone, and there is a significant amount of vacant or underutilized land that's all contiguous to each other, that, that I think that is something we can look at and see what we would want to, want to do with that. Admitting that we have one development that's kind of sitting in the center of that, and that we're pushing through 123rd Street that's gonna open it up for either kind of development, so it's important to do it in the near term, to be able to look at what do we want the future of that area to look like, otherwise, we may not get what we want, because we're, like every place else, when you add infrastructure, then you create the possibility for people to come in and build what they want, or what they can pencil out is more important. I had one question, Mr. Bueller, we've just now, you know, we went through this process where we delayed a, an, an, an upzoning action in, in order to make sure that we put PDD rules in place, okay? And, and, and we've done that, and now that we've had- And then we've done that, and now we've had, started to work with a couple of properties that are looking to be developed using the PDD ordinance that we, now that you've given your hands dirty with that ordinance, is there anything in that ordinance that maybe is not working the way that we hoped, or are we still too early to tell that?
I think it's too early to tell, but I will tell you that developers have had a very hard time meeting the precedent of landscaping to be set aside as private open, as open space. It is a tough standard. Other than that, I haven't had that much negative comments from the developers that had proposed that. That might be something that the council may wish to take a look at.
But it's a tough standard that we're asking them to meet in exchange for being able to have greater density and more units, so it's...
One of the things that the hearing examiner said in a recent hearing involving a PDD is in comparison to other communities, he felt that Lakewood's PDD standards were very excellent and were setting a record in a positive way, and he thought that the criteria that this city was using were most appropriate. But they are tough.
Mr. Brewer?
Just two things, you know, we will talk to the council a little bit more about the post-application amendments in the future, and we'll be a further discussion on that. So, you know, please stay tuned. One thing I will also say about that is there's a reason why Springbrook was zoned at that higher density, and it was purely for GMA population allocations. So we go back to that, we could expect maybe some questions from others about reduction in population density and not meeting our housing allocations. But then again, I think it's most appropriate in Lakewood, given some of our unique issues that we have, not only with floodplain, but also with the airport. So there's much more to follow on this. At some point in time here, I would imagine the next couple of years, there's going to be a county-wide population distribution under GMA. The City of Lakewood will actually be asking for less population growth, not more, given some of its unique characteristics. So just an FYI for something to be attuned to in the future.
Mr. Ressler?
One last question, Mr. Mayor, since you brought it up on the population allocation. You know, over a year ago, council and staff and others talked about how do we get the atrium of the air corridors and those two zoning districts that are, that the JLS doesn't want us to do, and while they're residential now, that they need to be turned over gradually to become something else, out of the formula for housing, housing allocation. Did any conversations of that sort go anywhere? Or is that a conversation we need to restart with folks in Pierce County and PSRC and...
I think-
Without legislative?
I think personally, the most appropriate time to speak about the population allocation is really through GMCC and PCRC, because it gets into some really specifics where, you know, you have to drill down and say that Lakewood has some unique issues, that placing housing underneath an airport just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I would ask the council to be patient on that, the time is forthcoming. I will also state to you that as a part of 18A, we're going to be looking at those standards. Under the most recent ACU's report for, for, they did relax some of the standards, and so we need to maybe take that into account in our review. But definitely it's not the city's desire to see increased population in those parts of the city.
Thank you. More to come. Next up is Ms. Walker with a review of pawn shop code amendments. What?
It's the consignment assignment.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood, and I was asked to review the pawn shop code provisions that the council has had in place since very early in cityhood, and-
It's a high interest subject.
What's it?
So it's a high interest subject.
I normally expect that from another council member. This subject came up because we are in a position now to look at the impact that it has on potential sales of the businesses in question. And in looking at it, there's the potential for a property owner to argue that the value of their property has been severely diminished by the impact of this ordinance. And so in going through it, and I wanted to credit Tiffany Spearwood Community Development in helping to go through this, and I believe Ms. McCain was also available for parts of it, and Courtney, formerly Cassidy, I'm not sure, I know the current last name, but I have proposed removing a lot of language, and essentially, the language appears to be outdated to the current needs of the city. The objective of the original code was to try to reduce the number of pawn shops, and the only question we really grappled with was, is there a way to hold that total in a more elegant fashion than what we proposed? Essentially, what this would do is it would put these properties on notice that if they did change business model, the owners left completely, didn't sell it to somebody to pick up the pawn shop business, that business would no longer be able to be a pawn shop. And our goal would be to get it down to two. But we are not specifying which one of the currently existing pawn shops need to go away or anything of that nature. We'll let, we'll let it happen in whatever fashion the market dictates rather than trying to push it. The language that was originally in the code was designed to kind of force a number to be the consequence, and it hasn't necessarily achieved that end, but neither have we had ongoing issues with the pawn shops. And if anything, the indication I've received from our police department is that those businesses are pretty cooperative and helpful in working with law enforcement. I have received one other question along the way, and it's under section 5.12.075. Apparently whoever originally drafted this ordinance really meant that the pawn shops need to have a current valid federal firearms license because we said they must shall. We will, as a matter of housekeeping, take out the word must, shall is more standard in legal language to say that they shall have it. The other question that came up is the amount of information that we ask under sub A of that same section about people who are in the business and handling firearms. This is where pawn shop requirements and firearms requirements cross over a little bit. This is the kind of information that law enforcement needs in order to run backgrounds on people, and so that's the reason for the data that's requested there.
Did you make that just consistent with whatever applicable state law there is as opposed, because we've run a file of a pin or this or that, whatever?
Yeah, I'll confirm that it's dead on with state law. I would be happy to try and answer any other questions the council may have. This was an attempt to answer the inquiry that was brought to us earlier about ways to ensure that the owners, if they are changing hands, don't lose the value of their property and their business.
Mr. Ressler?
Mr. Mayor, while you mentioned in your comments, and that while we want to tend the value of a business to current owners, that the proposal would be that if a business lapsed being a pawn shop, that then it would not generate the ability for another pawn shop to be open somewhere else?
That is correct, Councilmember Branstadter. This was an attempt to harmonize the original intent of limiting the businesses without, at the same time diminishing the value to current owners.
Okay, in the original ordinance, back before any of us were on the council, what was the binding of that that led to the number two? Being the number of pawn shops that were, that more than two would not be useful? I mean, I guess I'm not quite sure. I mean, so, you know, I'd be open to just looking at whether our policy is to drive the number two in the framing of our ordinance, or to merely make sure that we have standards, or at least discuss whether two is the right number to be able to go to do that, because I couldn't answer why it's two instead of four, or goes on well, because I also, and in a number of the pawn shops in the city, and have, and while they are pawn shops, they seem to be well-run businesses.
Mr. Wolke?
Yeah, and I appreciate your efforts on this. I don't have the historical perspective on Lakewood with 25 pawn shops or whatever we had. I would say that it's my understanding that this is an industry that's changed a lot over the years, and there's actually, I think, national firms involved in pawn shops. There are certainly regional firms, I mean, there's a firm out of Bellevue that's involved. So I'm fine believing in, I think we're saying leave it at four. I think I'm with Mr. Branstadter, if I understood his remarks correctly. And I get we have the burden of history here, but I'm not, I feel like, you know, nobody comes and asks me how many McDonald's or Starbucks we should have, right? And we don't, and we don't want to do that, I don't think. So I'm fine with what you've done, but I, and I guess, but I'm also saying that it is an industry that's changed quite a bit over, probably since the start of cityhood. And, you know, I'm fine with setting a different number, or...
I'd like to know, you know, what we're trying to accomplish and why. I wouldn't want a pawn shop on every corner, but it's more of a zoning issue. I'd also like to hear from the police department as to their interaction to Mr. Wolke's point with respect to the change in the industry. A lot of that has been, you know, computer-aided regulation, and sometimes you hear anecdotally pawn shops assisting in solving crimes as opposed to facilitating them, and they're so heavily regulated that if, with proper oversight, is my impression that they aren't a big problem with respect to stolen merchandise. We have people on street corners who are a problem with respect to stolen merchandise. But I don't know, so I'd like to know the police department's perspective, and then exactly what we, what we expect to accomplish.
Well, the LPD gave some input during the time we were working on business licenses, and I contacted them independently. It's what you say, they've had good cooperation, and it sounds like the pawn shops are not in any way part of the problem, and they do use a computerized state-run system to clear whether or not there's any stolen goods going through the pawn shops. And from the sound of it, at least in Lakewood, the pawn shops have not really been part of any particular problem. I would tell you beyond that, the conversation that the council's having is strictly policy, and we're here ready to put into place whatever the council wishes.
If we're seeing a need to expand beyond the original intent, this is a great compromise to not punish the folks who've done a good job of having small businesses here in Lakewood and allow them to sell if they so choose to retire or whatever.
Yeah, although I think there is legal precedent for allowing people to, a period of time to amortize out their investment when you outlaw them. I've always felt a bit uneasy about that from a business equity standard saying, well, yeah, you have 10 years, get all the money you can and then evaporate.
So can I ask, Mr. Brewer, can you say? So we have four here.
Correct.
And what this would do is if I'm number four and I decide, yeah, I want to get out of this business, it allows me to sell.
Correct, if you sold it to another pawn broker, they buy, they buy a going concern pawn shop, and yes, it's a state-regulated industry.
So theoretically, we could keep four for-
As long as they sell to others.
Fifty years or five years, because if they just close up and go away, then the license goes away.
Correct.
This is the law, we need a new licensee to be the purchaser if they clear the rules with the state.
Correct, correct. So an existing pawn-
Much the same as a liquor license.
Correct, correct. So an existing pawn shop can stay an existing pawn shop, a new pawn shop would not be able to locate.
So if one of the bigger players wanted to get in, they could just buy an existing one?
That would be their only option under the way it's worded, correct. And the question, I'm hearing the council suggests that the existing four are fine unless they extinguish naturally, and then we would bear a smaller number, but not necessarily stating any kind of goal.
Right. Well, I get that, I'd also be open to, you know, another reputable person with a license and come in, you know, to letting zoning in the market determine whether someone came in and wanted to build and establish a fifth or a sixth pawn shop, and just making sure that our zoning is such that we have an idea about where that would go, as opposed to it being prohibitive, that the only, that the only way into, into the market is to buy an existing pawn shop is, you know, I'm not sure what the rationale for that is, I mean, the two-four, I think, there may be reasonable for there to be some new pawn shops, particularly given of the way that that business now operates. I'm a little hesitant to go that far, based on image of nothing else, after all the infrastructure improvements we put in to pack highway and the like, to have a highly visible area repopulated by pawn shops, I don't think, irrespective of the economics, I just don't think it sends the right message. I like the message Starbucks went into Tullip.
And the pawn shop owners might like that reduced competition.
Yeah, and actually, I think it may actually enhance the value of the existing-
License.
License.
It's like a taxi cab down.
That's right. I think the state overtime's going to continue to break or very stiffly transfer even more interest restrictions and the like.
I think we're good on that.
That's what it is.
Okay, so I think we're good on that.
It means that you have to get your license.
Anything else you have, Ms. Walker?
No, I will go forward with, Councilmember Wolke had asked the question of how this actually limits pawn brokers to existing shops, and it would be because of the limitation on the number, you would have to buy from an existing pawn broker. But I will come back to the council with something that indicates no growth in pawn shops, but that allows owners to sell their property for the value of the business.
Okay, thank you. We now move to Ms. Shields with a review of the 2019, 2020 human services allocation and funding process.
and Funding Process.
Are you going to leave me alone? I have two members of our advisory board here, so...
I thought they were throwing you under the bus.
I feel better when they're...
They can come down.
You can come up to the table.
Come on in. Very impromptu here.
She only knows where to get this close.
Good evening, Mayor.
It's the only way you can get a pay raise.
I have two members of our community services advisory board, Deanne Harris and Lori Moss.
Good evening.
Deanne is our vice chair this year and then also serving on the ad hoc committee as we've been going and preparing for the next round of funding for human services. So, we are in the middle of our planning process to prepare for the funding cycle that would begin with a July date and would end at the end of November, presenting to you a recommendation for funding for the nineteen, no, two thousand, oh my gosh, 2019, 2020 human services funding years. So, we met with you on the 12th of March and at that time, the direction received was to go ahead and use emergency food as a separate category for our funding strategies. And that basically moves that funding from stabilization where that emergency food funding has always sat. So, clearly identifying food as a priority area in that, in the stabilization arena and that we would use the I-NIDs documentation for fiscal oversight and review for the applications. That we would allow more than one application to be submitted by an organization and that funding request could be up to $25,000. So, that's where we left with you. And then the advisory board has met several times since then. Also, the ad hoc committee has really been grinding down to the details about what kind of questions we're going to ask. And the, we came up with a rating system of, a three-point rating system in six major categories of the application. And those are good, those six major categories are in your memo. It's program design, service coordination and partnership, effective practice, accessibility and outreach to Lakewood residents, and data collection and data management, as well as appropriate amount of requested funds for the level of service that we would be receiving from that nonprofit organization. So, what we've, what we've been really working on is trying to get a more consistent look and review process. And I think that the ad hoc committee has worked very, very hard on what would that be look like, what would be the examples, how we would want to evaluate even, you know, down to the terms of this is the type of answer we'd be looking for in the application. And so, I think that the consistent thing has been, you know, program design and outreach to Lakewood residents. I think those haven't changed. Program coordination and partnership has always been paramount in the application process as well as fiscal responsibility. So, those were, at this point, we're preparing right down to the application and that's included in your memo and that the draft application has been reviewed and questions been crafted by the advisory board to put the pieces together. So, tonight, we just wanted to review with you our process and make sure that, that we're in a good steady step with, with what you expect from us as the advisory board for delivering to you the best possible set of recommendations for funding. So, as I mentioned, July 2nd would be when the RFP would be released. And we would then have a workshop with our applicant organizations. And that's where we really review and inform everybody about what's the expectation and what are the type of program we're looking for. And then they would have about five to six weeks to complete that application. August 27th would be when it would be due, like Monday due dates versus Friday due dates because for some reason copiers go down on Friday afternoons. I don't know why that is. So, we'll be looking for those and on the 27th of Monday and then turn those directly around to ruin our advisory board's holiday weekend, the Labor Day weekend by giving them a lovely stack of proposals to review. They're just gonna enjoy that so much. And so then they will, they will have two weeks to review those and they independently rate and rank those. So, the deliberation is when we pull all of those pieces, those individual scores back together and then have a comprehensive look of how did that applicant score and overall of the submissions that we received. Then our deliberations start in late September. That's when we will dialogue around what we see in those scores and then start looking toward balancing our dollars available with our applications that we've received. And once again, also look at those five strategies and make sure that we're trying to hit as many marks as we possibly can and fulfilling all the needs that we have in community services in our area. Then we'll be here back to you in November to prep with that stellar group of recommendations and looking for your funding approval before, along with the budget cycle that we've done that in the last couple of years. So, that is our plan of action at this point and we'd love to hear your thoughts, concerns going forward, any direction about types of services or needs that the community needs and this group needs to address. And certainly, if you have any thoughts about what you experienced in this redevelopment of the application process of our group.
Questions? Mr. Brandstetter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, not totally related, but, you know, I'm looking at the draft human services funding application and we realigned components, program components, what we're calling into five groups, separating out food as its own component to be able to go through and do that and check on it. And you mentioned that you haven't quite finalized the questions yet.
These are, we're really working on the questions. I think we're there. That was our last review was to get those questions fine-tuned. But it's been how the question is answered that the advisory board is going to be probably taking one more look and making sure that, is this the question we're asking and what do we expect to hear or see or understand from the responses to that question? What will we be looking for? So, that's the grinding down that we're doing at this point.
I guess my, my question about would you consider is that you have five program components, but then all you have are generic questions. I mean, there is no unique question that you're only going to ask the people that check housing assistance there or no unique question that you're going to ask access to health and behavioral health. And I think that there are, is an element of what are you looking for inside each of these components that a section with a question that's worth some points that you answer if you're applying for this component that would tell the committee something that they want to know, but that only applies to housing or behavioral health or something like that to, you know, behavioral health, qualifications of your staff and, you know, when did they last time have a psychological evaluation or something maybe? Whereas in housing, I may well have a, have a different thing that wouldn't apply to the other category. So, while historically you've asked generic questions for everyone, I would suggest that you could at least consider whether there is a room and it would flow and not disrupt the process...
Yes.
To be able to go and do that. The last thing is since we met in March, we have had the incident of the young girl that took her own life and, and the community discussion and concerns around bullying and that to be able to go and do that. And I guess within which of these components or is there a way to look at whether it's possible to invest in some program that would be able to be impactful in that regard? You know, that's, you know, there's a life loss there and so to say, well, it just happened, okay? To say that all of the policies and procedures were followed and everything without taking a look to try to say what can we make, what can we change so that it doesn't happen again? And that I don't know of a way to, 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 to be with it, a, 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 a recommendation with that, but I certainly would, anybody that proposed something that had the chance to impact that as an element is something that I think the community, that's a need that we didn't ask about in our needs assessment of a number of years ago. It's, it was, it was there then, but we didn't, wasn't at the fore. And so, I'd ask you to take a look around that particular issue and it might, it might fall into one of, of several of your components that someone would look to do that. And if there is a way to express an interest in program, a program that might address that, I'd be interested in, if there is someone out there with a workable idea, okay? And it's not, not just to put some money against something to say that we did, but if someone has something that the committee feels is workable and could make a difference,
So, more of a, on a preventative basis of...
You know, you know, I don't know whether the solution is preventive. I don't know whether the solution is educational to, to teach responses to it. I don't know whether it's a community program to teach witnesses of it to say something and intervene. And, you know, any one of those things could have made a difference in the most recent situation, so...
I think there's, there's some great community partners out there. Specifically, I'm thinking the Health Department, the Choice Coalition is, works on, you know, substance abuse prevention, but also has a mental health component. So, to me, that would, it would be a collaborative sort of proposal versus a one singular organization responsible for doing the work. It really has that need to be a more comprehensive community approach. And I, we have talked about, you know, those collaborative opportunities, funding opportunities, what would they look like? And this would be prime piece for that. But yes, I think it's a children's mental health issues and suicide prevention is, yes, very, very much on, you know, in the radar of our Public Health Department as well as any human service providers that are providing services to youth.
Just on that point, Mr. Brandstetter, I think, are you invited to be on the panel for the CEELT team coming up?
I, I have yet, I have to be assigned, but yes. But yes, that communication.
That is maybe a parcel of the discussion point about a larger possible community engaged exercise on it. If you haven't been, let me know if you're supposed to be.
So, but, but on that note, exactly, is that idea that it's going to take multiple partners and multiple approaches to really start addressing that concern and that need. And I think that that's, that's part of the work that Promise Board can work on with on this particular, so we could, we could have asked for, let me think about that, but we could do a really kind of a, more of a letter of interest or a letter of, something, could be something very cool.
Well, I did, I think, I think it's something for the committee to decide while keeping the process fair, whoever wants to vote.
Right.
So, while you have, I'll throw a wrench in the works, while you're going through the fair process, if there's an emerging, emerging opportunity that's out of cycle, whether it's something to do with mental health or it's something to do with the youth labor program that was potential and we have the opportunity and desire as a council to participate in something that's human services oriented like that and partnering with an expert organization. And we want to tap some of these funds. What's too far in your cycle to, to do that? I mean, I mean, so if, if we're going to pull $50,000 away to solve the world's problems because we just got the chance last week, like, for example, on the county side, the Cohen Veterans Center came up. It's totally out-of-budget cycle, fit all the criteria that were included in behavioral health priorities. And so, everybody rallied around and say, where are we going to pick? We're on steel, some, something to incentivize this and we happen to be able to do it in Lakewood. So, Becky Becker, she's a great part of that. If we have such a wonderful opportunity with, it's going to be great leverage. We don't want to miss it, but we don't want to pull $50,000 out of rug, out from underneath the committee too late in the process and we screw everything else up either. So, what's our drop dead date on that?
Well, that's a great, a great question. I think that we don't even begin to talk the money part of those proposals until we get to, you know, a couple rounds into the deliberation. We do announce, when we do the announcement of the request for proposals, we do say that there is X amount available and that would be based on the budget that was put before, before the council for the coming biennium. And so, that would be, you know, but the actual dollars to programs happens in that September, October timeframe. And, and we will be, that's when we check in to say, okay, is it, is it the amount that we assume we're going to be there? And that's the part of the balancing act that we do along the way.
How about after August?
Yeah. Yeah, at the end of August, yeah, early September, it would be good to know.
Stabilization, including job unemployment, we want to talk about that so they have some directional plan. I mean, if we're inclined to do something like we saw tonight, if we're inclined to do that, I would think you would want us to say, hmm, help us tweak the program component piece before we set the application out in the hinterlands, like under stabilization services, maybe it's employment and related stabilization services or something like that, maybe gap to youth. In terms of the behavioral health thing, like, I think we've already got access to health and behavioral health. So, if you happen to attract an applicant who had particular bent toward youth intervention activities, that, that would show up here hopefully. But on the job thing we heard about tonight, we might want to redefine that category if we're inclined to do that.
I think it's similar to nine years ago when there was a year when, or maybe it's 10 years ago, when there was a year when... upfront in the process, the, the, the council said for this year, we're going to want to support the capital project of a new boys and girls club.
Right.
And, and they, and then, and then for a year, or maybe it was two years, there was a out of, out of this funding category, there was some council, there was a council directed contribution for two years. And then after that ended, it went back to, to, to being otherwise. So there's, um, I think we've got plenty of time.
So, I, I think my recommendation had always been when we're trying to do something that may be innovative or, or, or towards a new direction, um, it's always best to do a demonstration or a pilot or a, or a special project. Um, so yes, the council said, yes, we want to set aside a certain amount for special projects related to.
I, I, I think.
Then, and, and request, and, and have that. I would almost say that would be a, a parallel process to, rather than trying to fold it into the current ones. Uh, because I think that, that's, uh, change of direction or it's a good way to give people that kind of heads up. That the council's looking at moving in, um, in certain directions that hasn't been the same for the, the last two set, two rounds of this fund. Because we use this for funding priorities. This will be our third time using these funding priorities. And I was just thinking of that earlier, that we, that needs analysis should be revisited and, you know, there's some work that needs to be done with that. And that is where we can start really moving, um, priorities in a different direction. But in the interim, piloting or demonstrating or set, you know, setting aside is a, a, a really good kind of safe try, rather than saying, we switch. Yeah.
I, I, I think the, 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 the key thing for us to be careful about is that we don't identify something we'd want to fund and create a way for someone to go around the process when they are an eligible person to participate, eligible group to participate in the process and their program would be eligible to compete with other like programs. But where we would have something that is unique and targeted that we want to, to pilot or even, even to say that we don't know the who, but we know the what and we would want to say, tell the committee, find someone to do an, a, 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 an intervention against this need and dedicate certain amount of money. Or as like said, as like the, the, the youth council folks have proposed, a employment program to us today, if we wanted to go in some level with that. You know, that doesn't fit in any of these categories and we would certainly do something like that as a pilot and not as a, as a, as a, as a, as a lifelong commitment.
Well, thanks for the update. There's a lot of work in front of you.
They, they are going to start their heavy lifting very, very soon. So, and I, I just want to say how much I appreciate the dedication, um, that, uh, these two members have shown as well as the, uh, others that really, um, trying to get a, a finer product, um, uh, something that they can be very proud to present and also do a really good service to the community by, um, safeguarding those dollars and using them wisely. So I'm very dedicated to that outcome and I really do appreciate you for that.
Well, certainly, you know, given we have other advisory committees that feel in good with each other. You know, this is a committee that deals with problems, okay? And, and, and that we really appreciate that back that you're, you're willing to wade in on us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much for your help.
Let's take a five minute comfort break and, uh, get into the six year tip. We're not six years for the tip. Back at nine, we can be denied.
How was the sound out? Can you hear the mics?
Oh man, I hear so many complaints.
Is it? Yeah, because people are not happy with this one for some reason.
Lots of complaints.
But. Well, I was wondering how the mic sound is out there. It's getting a little fuzzy. People are breaking at us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I've heard breaks too.
Same people waiting, I hear you, get back.
Yeah.
Be a straight bit of that.
Yeah.
What's going on with you?
I don't know. You guys are pretty good at this. A little. There you go. Listen, can you hear us?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we're five and four on a super close. Okay, let's keep going. What, what creates the thing to go crazy?
All right, we're back in session. We have Mr. Hott with the review of the six year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-four transportation improvement program, better known as the six year tip.
Mr. I. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. For discussion and review this evening is the final draft of the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four six year tip. Staff has brought up the tip to the planning commission twice and all review comments have been incorporated into the document and the commission had no additional comments for the council. As background, the six year transportation improvement program is done annually by each city in Washington and it's filed with the Secretary of, uh, Washington State Department of Transportation no later than July thirtieth of every year. The tip is a combination of transportation projects that meet the goals of the adopted comprehensive plan and regionally significant projects in and around the city. The tip does not have to be limited by available revenues and can be changed at any time through a process and advertised public hearing and a majority council approval. Uh, the tip is different than the six year capital improvement program that's developed as part of, part of the budget. Uh, however, the tip reflects planning level estimates of project costs and identifies where funds may come from. It is important that the project is in the tip because this allows staff to apply for grant funding where appropriate. Uh, for this evening to make, uh, review easier, there's a color coding used in the final draft of the tip. It's in your packet pages sixty-three to eighty-five where there's no color filled. That's, uh, projects that were previously in the tip. The only slight modifications are in project numbering and, uh, moving of a year or maybe a slight budget cha- or a slight change due to the budget to reflect the budget. To call attention to the projects that are removed, those are in red. And these are just basically generally themed tasks that have been in there for quite some time. And these, um, while you can't put them in the tip, uh, they don't meet the requirements for funding agencies currently. So we've removed those in favor of specific projects. Uh, for projects that are anticipated to be completed this year, uh, and they will be removed from the tip because it starts in twenty nineteen, they're shown in green and so they'll be removed ahead of the hearing. And then projects in yellow, that's where the real work is at, uh, this evening. Those are either changes to a project, uh, limit or cost or a new project. And the way you can tell if it's a new project, there's no project numbering associated with those. I'll number them tomorrow if there's no, uh, no changes, um, in anticipation that there could possibly be an addition or a deletion. Uh, and attachment B is our up to date traffic, uh, accident data that just, uh, came in about three weeks ago and then also the pavement management data. And as an aside, Public Works Engineering will start our walking survey of Lakewood's roads in about three weeks, um, to update the pavement management, uh, database. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We could also go through this, uh, and look at each one of the yellow projects or whatever would be most convenient for the council.
Also have a preference? Any questions? Mr. Waylon?
Yeah, I think that would be kind of helpful if we can do that briefly. And if, as we go through there, you can tell us whether the yellow or the red has been impacted or modified as a result of the accident data. Because I find that there's some streets that are consistent on every road brick, including like Meadow Road and Mount Tacoma, which I have been one of those statistics.
Hold on.
Yeah, one of my, uh, friends came to visit and borrowed our car and they got hammered at the intersection of Meadow Road and Mount Tacoma a few years back. So anyway, I'm familiar with that intersection. But going back to the question you should lead us through, how does the accident data help inform staff as to what roads get certain priorities for improvements, especially with regard to safety issues?
Right, so I'll address that kind of at ten thousand foot level. So we're always looking at the accident data to make sure we don't see a trend that could be indicative of, of something to do with the transportation element, the intersection or the roadway. So for instance, at Mount Tacoma and Meadow, because I drive that, um, a couple of times a week and we've trimmed back the vegetation, we've looked at it. To be honest, I can't tell you why we have that high of accident, uh, occurrence.
I can tell you it's stupidity. People just don't even stop at the white lines actually. Yeah.
I would agree because you have the same issue at a hundred and eighth in Bridgeport. I mean, that road is in beautiful condition, has a great signal, and yet we have a car that hits the side of Wendy's. I mean, how do you get clear over to Wendy's?
Yeah.
So.
Maybe they're really hungry.
Yeah. And then we also include the fatalities and, and they run into three categories typically, uh, inattention of a driver hitting. inattention of a driver hitting a pedestrian, a motorcycle, and the motorcycle are often running for DUI, and then the same with the car, high-speed type situation, hitting a fixed object. Those are our three typical ones that again are a challenge to engineer to, for the reasons you mentioned just a minute ago. So, looking at the changes, really the major work is in section two, but we'll start in one. The grade separation at Hundred Street, that is in the comp plan, so reading through the comp plan earlier this year, I came across this, I talked to the city manager, and we put that in, and it does make a lot of sense. Now, this is a heavy lift project, this would be a large dollar amount, you know, looking at the structure costs, they'd be in the thirty to forty million dollars, you know, five million dollars probably in engineering and right-of-way acquisition. The two options would be to go over or under the tracks there at Hundred, so again, this is a, this is outside of staff's level of expertise, this is, would be anticipated to be led by WashDOT or Tacoma Rail. Kendrick Street is an interesting one, so we have the kiss-and-ride for the train station, the Sounder Station, and that's on Kendrick from Hundred and twelfth back into the station, but there's no direct connection to Hundred and Eighth and Elementary School, and looking at Google Earth, there's a tremendous amount of multifamily residential in that area. So it would develop, it would pull that corridor right down, and you'll see later on, we have another project on the other side of Pack Highway that's very similar. So if there's no questions on those two in section one, we'll flip to two, so that's where the majority of the changes are. So on council packet page sixty-five at the bottom, project three oh two zero zero fifty-five Lakewood Drive, that's one that the engineer and I are gonna walk on Friday, and we'll bring that to add here real shortly, and that will, the majority of it will be completed this year, that's why I kind of put some green on the end. There'll be a little bit carryover into two thousand nineteen, but our goal is to build that project this year.
Only seventy-five grand left of it, huh?
Yeah, that would be just the kind of punch list, last little bits of maybe some concrete, little things that might, and that's just me being conservative on that.
What does south of Custer Road mean? That, that's a pretty, unlike most of the other projects, except pretty nonspecific as to where it is.
So if, if, if I touch a crosswalk, I have to bring the whole side of that, the sidewalk, the ADA ramps, everything has to be brought up to current ADA standards, which it currently does not meet. So what I'll do is go right up to that crosswalk, and then what we're gonna do in the fall is apply for, late summer, apply for a grant to do that whole intersection, and then the piece to the north, north, along H and L Produce up to the golf course there. So do that as one, one project. While we can knock out Lakewood Drive, which the pavement's really rough, you've got the potholes, O and M is out there a couple times a month during the winter, just fighting that thing, so we're trying to take care of that piece of Lakewood Drive from Flet Creek, which is where the apartments are up to right at Custer.
So, the, the follow-on grant that you're going to apply for, then go through the intersection and further down?
Yep.
Is that in here?
Yes, that's correct, that is in here as well. That will be an unnumbered one, it is... See, that's the east city limits along there. Yeah, so it'll be on council packet page sixty-nine at the top, so about three pages on further than we're currently at, yeah. So, so for Lakewood Drive, our goal is to get that piece that's given us such trouble completed this summer. And so we'll be back to you shortly with that one. On page sixty-six of the council packet, we took that combined project of Mount Tacoma and Interlock and Drive and broke it up into two separate projects. That will give us a better opportunity to look at completing it, because Interlocken is such a challenge with the narrow right-of-way, where Mount Tacoma, we'd probably have a better chance of getting sidewalk on one side on that one. So it seemed appropriate for the tip to split that up into two separate projects. And then page sixty-seven, you'll see we did the same thing with the Oak Brook sidewalks, eighty-eight and eighty-nine, so eighty-eight is the one that's actually in the six-year CIP in the last budget, and that's in the out years, and it goes from Oak Brook Elementary all the way down to Phillips', and that's to join up with our other improvements we've made on Phillips'. However, we've also identified the other piece of the roadway onyx from ninety-seven, or eighty-seven to ninety-seven, so they're separated out.
So, you've done that?
Open house.
Yeah, and then you did the computer thing where people, what results did we get?
So Burke is sending those to us, we just corresponded with them last week, so we should be getting those summary results here pretty quick.
Did you have a lot of participation?
You know, I can't quote the number off the top of my head, but yes, we did, so there's a lot of interest out there, and understandable, there's quite a bit of resident, residential out there.
With respect to those two projects, owners, you know, the Garnet to Phillips', that starts where there are sidewalks and goes all the way to Phillips'. The other project is listed eighty-seventh to ninety-seventh.
Correct.
And at one time, there was an eighty-seventh to eighty-ninth project, and then an eighty-ninth to ninety-seventh, and we thought that the eighty, that the eighty-seventh to eighty-ninth was gonna happen in a very near term. Is that now then, then scratched as an independent project, and we're looking at a project that's that whole length, and there's not an eighty-seventh to eighty-ninth project?
That's correct. The direction I have is to do a complete project that gets us all the way down to Little Park. So what we did, it'll be two years ago this summer, is we chip sealed that, and so it's rough in there, however, that chip seal eliminated O and M going out there. I counted, I think, six times, so that would have been the winter of two thousand seventeen, they were out there fixing potholes in there, and so we, so we chip sealed over just to hold that road together, and it ended up working out good for us, because we can let that road sit for another year or two, it won't, it won't bubble back up on us again, and then we can come in and do a coherent project.
So, so the, the flip, because the neighborhood is gonna see this as we've asked for sidewalks, we've gone to meetings, and we're still out to two thousand twenty-four. And so, we're, and we're another three years before even construction starts, so the, the response, the response to it is, we're just gonna do the whole thing.
That's correct.
We're not gonna do the ninety, eighty-seventh and ninety.
Eighty-ninth, it's just those first two blocks, yeah.
The two blocks, we're gonna come in and we're gonna do the whole thing.
That's correct.
And, and almost all of that is, we have right-of-way already.
Correct.
Okay.
And so that'll be something for a fair amount of discussion during the budget process on funding that and timing of that funding, and how it's funded. And then on the next project, ninety-two, at the end of page sixty-seven in your packet, I just pulled the limits from Fair Lawn down to Gravely to complete that. There's some sidewalk in there, but the road's in pretty poor shape, so just pulled that project down a little bit, because the goal is to complete coherent segments of our arterials from a given location to another completed location. So again, it was just a minor change from that standpoint.
So the grant there that you were reflecting in two thousand twenty-two, one's like five million, is that the anticipated ask we're gonna make during that cycle?
In that timeframe, the appropriate granting agency would most likely be TIB, Transportation Improvement Board. That's definitely in the realm, we've currently completed all our TIB grants, so the two on South Tacoma Way were our last two TIB grants, five twelve to ninety-six, and then up there at eighty-eight, Silicon, South Tacoma Way. So we're definitely in a position to, you know, put in a grant and have a good shot. Previously, we had asked for Lakewood Drive to the tune of, it was like three point five or three point six million. So the kind of a strategy might be to do two grants, one, that Lakewood Drive from Seventy-Fourth and Lakewood to the north as one grant, and then put in this as another grant.
Okay.
And then I have a couple of infill projects on page sixty-eight. We have these bits of frontage improvements on Hundred Street from roughly Bridgeport up to Lakewood Drive, to kind of get those wrapped up. Similar is the next one down, it says Military and Far West, and it has kind of funny limits from Hundred Sixteenth to Hundred Twelfth. So we have the safety project up at Military and Hundred Twelfth, we're gonna have a couple developer projects coming down the road, and then we have a little bit of, it's Far West from Military to Hundred Sixteenth, and then you have a big bunch of multifamily back in there. So the city can come in as that last mile, so to speak, that last little bit, and we could have coherent sidewalks all the way from down at Far West and Hundred Sixteenth, all the way up to Military and Hundred Twelfth, and then follow on past Lakes, so then we, we're starting to fill in our, our missing pieces, so that's what that one is. And then in that similar vein, we have Hundred and Twelve sidewalks, Gravely to Bridgeport, so that's the full limits that we would like to do along Clover Park High School, all the way down to Bridgeport. There's no sidewalk there right now, other than in front of the church, there's wide shoulders, so we put in that whole piece from Gravely down to Bridgeport. And then, the students, when they leave Clover Park, they come in, back into town center, they come in at Davison and Highland, they come in that way off of Hundred and Twelve into the town center, and so that would set us up for possible Safe Routes to School projects.
Now, on the Hundred and Twelfth, Gravely to Bridgeport, what's the conversation about developer or adjacent property owner expectations? I've heard a couple of things.
So in, in this case, it would only be if the new development were, to come in, and I kind of shifted gears from you, on you, from another piece of Hundred and Twelve cleared to the other side of the city here, so this is the Clover Park piece.
Something about the problems that might happen across Clover Park in that area.
Yeah, exactly, if, if they were, they would have to do their half-street frontage improvements, which would then contribute to a successful project.
Okay.
And, you know, the piece along Clover Park, this last year, Safe Routes to School said that they would accept high schools as projects to put grants in for, so then this would put us in a good position next year to apply for, you know, at least a piece across the high school, and then if the city chose to fund it, take that sidewalk all the way up to Bridgeport, as an example.
So the Safe Routes to School would go on there, along Hundred, by the stadium, by the park, on there?
If you can show that you have a number of students coming from a residential area or a multifamily area, then they will, they will continue on down. An example would be John Dower that we recently did from Custer to Silicon, because there's enough multifamily down that piece to get them to fund that all the way to Silicon. Yeah, but the city still brought the pavement portion to the table on that.
Just, just run out of comment on there, that there's developers looking to do some new stuff on Gravely Lake.
Okay.
And there may be a concern that if we make their percentage or their participation so high, they're gonna question, well, what about the existing people who get it for free?
Right.
So we have to have a parity on some of that as we go through the process, and certainly have to make it workable for the city too.
Okay, I'll definitely make a note of that.
Well, that's the thing, otherwise.
We don't want to win.
Yeah, if they don't want to win, then you're, that's true everywhere.
Right, but we gotta treat it somewhat fairly.
So moving down a little bit, these last two projects on page sixty-eight, Custer Road, Bridgeport to Lakewood Drive, that area is just ripe for a transportation project, but I tell you, it's, it's gonna be challenging. The right-of-way is narrow, we have some frontage improvements, like at the McDonald's and the Sound Glass, but across the street at the pool, spa company, you know, Custer Road, veterinary, some of those places, there's, there's nothing along there, there's a car dealership, but that Custer Road, that Custer Seventy-Fourth corridor just gets a tremendous amount of traffic, because everybody heads that way out to I five.
Yeah.
So it, it also lends itself, you know, as a good grant scoring project too, so it positions us well in two situations, one, the road does need attention, and two, it sets us up that if we choose, we can apply for grants for that. And then the last project on that page.
What, what, what does the parenthetical east city limits at the Port Street, if the project is titled Bridgeport to Lakewood Drive, then it's parenthetical east city limits, which on one end of, on one side of Custer, on the south side of Custer, city limits are a couple blocks further. Is, is that in, take that, that we do a sidewalk, go two blocks up until the, almost the boundary of the high school?
So that, that would be Tacoma, so I, I would only go to the east side of the intersection at the city limits, I don't believe it goes past that, I can double, I'm pretty sure.
At that intersection, the, the southeast corner of the intersection, there is a, there, there, there's, that's not in Tacoma, that's in, 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 in the city. The city is like on three corners, and Tacoma is a cemetery.
Yeah.
When you get down to Orchard Street, I think that's Orchard Street, the city limits go to Orchard on that, outside of, now, it may be that the roadway, the right-of-way is all, maybe, maybe, maybe the right-of-way is all city of Tacoma, but the properties are, like the properties of there.
Correct. So I set that one up, that if I put a grant in for that, I could also include the intersection. So say we weren't successful on the, the intersection in Lakewood to the north, maybe I could be successful on the Custer piece and include that intersection, so that's why you have that, that overlap at that intersection. So it sets us up to play that twice. The last one is a roundabout at the park entrance, we've all driven to the park, and we have different roads coming in, and, and people look at each other and wonder who to yield to who, and a, a good solution would be a roundabout at that point, and then it would also lend itself well for any kind of beautification, et cetera, but I think that would be the best solution for the entrance to the park. And then in roadway two, we have Lakewood Drive, Custer Seventy-Fourth to North City Limits, so that's a duplicate of that other piece, because we may do some improvements possibly ahead, again, it's just setting this up for opportunities, I may look at double-checking if that, that could possibly be removed. The project down below, the second one, Lakewood Drive, Silicon to Flet Creek, so that's again, it's an infill one, we have some sidewalk on the west side of the road, we have a little bit of sidewalk on the north side with Echelon, and you get down to the apartments, there's no left turn lane there, it's just four lanes, it's hard to make a left turn off of Lakewood Drive, you know, with folks coming down the hill behind you, so that's to add that piece. So it's really breaking Lakewood Drive into three pieces to, in the tip, but the desire is to accomplish Lakewood Drive completely from Silicon to North City Limits. The project after that, middle of page sixty-nine, is a Safe Routes to School type project at the entrance to Tai Park Elementary. You can see on the school where the pedestrian route begins. But we don't have anything lead, leading up to that. We have the right-of-way there, so we could do a sidewalk project, uh, at that intersection. And then in the future, look at how, um, or if appropriate, to expand the non-motorized access to the school, and that could be part of the non-motorized plan. And then we have a, a big project here, Hundred and Twelfth from Far West to Butte. That's the part that goes along, uh, Lake Louise Elementary. So we have frontage improvements on Lake Louise, but nothing on the other side of the school. And so that would start to infill sidewalk through that portion of the city. And then the project, uh, the last yellow one on sixty-nine, that's Forty-seventh Avenue. That's on the other side of Pac Highway from the Sounder Station. And we have all that multifamily and even future multifamily, uh, looking at going in, um, at Hundred Twenty-third. And that will give those folks a great way to walk down to Sounder Station. Uh, projects in the green again are ones that will be completed and be removed. And then in red, instead of just saying high accident, safety locations, uh, we identify, um, projects. So as an example, we could, um, we could look further at Meadow and, uh, Mount Tacoma and put that in as a specific project. But staff would have to come up with, uh, a treatment for it, uh, appropriate treatment and put in there.
Like a big sign of the clown head and have a X road or something?
We could.
No clowns?
So, page seventy of the packet, those again are some that would be removed. They're just generic in nature, um, and funding agencies don't recognize that. And then the, the last place that you'll see of the majority of the yellows under traffic signals. Sometimes we can get traffic signal, uh, funding for traffic signal, uh, grant independently. So I worked with operations and maintenance, asked them, uh, which signals were, needed to be repaired as sooner than later. And that's where we come up with that list on seventy-two. The only exception would be the one at Holden and Military. There's currently no traffic signal there. But with the New Man Middle School and everybody coming in off of Military, that, that's a cha, that's going to be a challenge at that location. So that's an opportunity to, um, look at a good signal that would help both the community and the new school there. And then page seventy-three, kind of more signals.
On the, on the traffic signals. You didn't incorporate in this tip, uh, any of the Central Business District Downtown Plan, uh, places where we received a briefing of that there were intersections that were going to be something, uh, once the sub-area plan is approved, that's, so that. But a, a year from now, they'd be, the tip would be salted with those projects.
Ex- exactly. So, so I think the, I can't remember the adoption on that, but I think it's after the tip approval. Then we would take those projects and put them in the next tip. We can either amend the tip or put them in to the next tip in, uh, this time next year. Those would be the two options. Uh, so after that, the only other yellow project, I believe, is, uh, looking on page seventy-eight. We'd like to look a little closer at that guard rail over Clover Creek. It's, it's, uh, functional but dated and unsightly.
Yeah.
And, and then the minor capital improvements on page eighty reflect what's budgeted. And then we added a roadway restoration project on page eighty-one. That's that Custer Road from John Dower down where we ended the Bridgeport and Custer, uh, improvements. Picking up that piece that's starting to delaminate.
How is that funded? Did I see it in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty window?
So again, that was a judgment call on, on my part, um, that it could be a potential for grants. Uh, SWIM always pays the portion of any storm drainage and curb and gutter. And then the other monies would be ci, city funded. But that's one that could be looked at in the budget process. If the city wanted to move it up, uh, most likely would have to be with the city funding mechanism. Because the grants wouldn't be, if we applied for this even under TIB, it wouldn't be, um, till twenty nineteen that we would be able to get that funding.
So is the significance that it's placed in the tip in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, a indication of your recommendation that we prioritize it earlier, such as ahead of the next sidewalk?
That, that would be a, a, that would be a judgment call based on a number of factors of what's important to the community, what's important to the council, what our funding levels are. This project is a modest cost, even though it is seven hundred thousand for road projects. Now that's kind of a modest cost. So how does that fit with your other maintenance activities on, on other roads? This one is similar to Lakewood Drive where this is an old county road that's been there for a long time. And it's starting to delaminate up, has a high level of traffic. It was chip sealed in roughly, um, two thousand two, I think is when it was chip sealed. That was the last time any major maintenance was done to that, that road. Just following forward, yeah. Mr. Folke.
Um, so s, I, I have several questions. Lighting, so what's our lighting plan going forward? Is that in here or are you taking it out?
So the street lighting, I believe it's in here as a placeholder. There are, um, a number of lighting projects planned. So on page seventy-seven, it just, it's, page seventy-seven demonstrates our funding level in the six-year CIP for street lighting. Uh, those are actual, uh, budgeted numbers.
And we're, okay, so those are budgeted?
Yeah. And so I believe the upcoming projects in eighteen and nineteen include things like out in Oak Brook and, uh, that, I don't know the name of what we call that neighborhood, but between Elwood and Hipkins, I know one of those cross streets. I can't remember if it's North or Ninety-second. But there's a, there's a smattering of different places where, uh, the street lighting's going in. We would have to, um, hold that list of projects. I don't have that readily available.
I'd like, yeah, just send it out to us, that would, that would be great. So, um, it seems like twenty nineteen and twenty twenty are pretty spare compared to what we've been doing.
Mm-hmm.
So give me a quick rundown. I mean, we can see the projects, but maybe I'm not seeing it all. And like, maybe I'm not, you know, when I see it bit by bit here and what we're doing. What are we gonna do in twenty nineteen?
So that, that's a good question. So what we've seen in the last two years is a very heavy construction capital. We've really put a lot of projects out on the street. Uh, we've brought in, uh, fixed-term staff. We've used consultants for a number of projects. We've put a lot of work out on the street. So then you go into that, okay, I've built all this stuff, now I gotta design projects again. But also, uh, grant funding, we're down to, uh, a handful of grants. Silicon Boulevard is currently, uh, funded for design, right-of-way, and then an overlay portion. And, uh, Silicon is, it gets a little complicated on some of those limits. We have the funding, which is a pretty heavy, uh, project out on Veterans. And that'll be from the park all the way out to gravelly. Uh, we get, received some, uh, funding for that. Uh, we're looking at Colonial Center, um, the Col- Colonial Center Plaza. So those, some of those projects are, uh, moving ahead.
So what year are you gonna do Veterans?
Uh, that's nineteen and twenty.
And then?
Probably is not in yellow.
Okay. And then, um, PCRC round, we're waiting on that.
Correct. So we just scored those grants last week. So I spent four days with my fellow peers scoring grants in a windowless room at the county.
Okay.
So it looks like, uh, June fourth will be the meeting where we discuss the scoring. Uh, it looks like, uh, we're in good shape for an overlay project and right-of-way funds on Silicon. But this is first cut. And so it's not until we come out of that meeting on June fourth till we have a feel where, where that will be a final. But, uh, we scored fairly well on those two.
And when is the Safe Routes to School money supposed to be used for Silicon Boulevard to Custer School? I mean, are, are you trying to get all that? Are, are they, is this, they can allow you to hold the money for empty years?
They are, that's what they told me two weeks ago, yeah, that we can hold it. Because it's all predicated on the right-of-way.
Okay.
That's the challenge.
Are you, you, the Safe Routes is on one side, but you still need the right-of-way?
You, you have to buy the right-of-way. And that's the challenge with Safe Routes to School. They don't pay for asphalt, they don't pay for right-of-way, they just wanna build sidewalks. Yeah.
Okay.
But they also have a, they have, I can't remember their funding off the top of my head, but the number's pretty small because it covers the whole, whole state.
Yeah, everybody has their wants.
Yeah, exactly. And we've been very successful with that money. And we've also delivered the projects, which is why we also get funding. Any other questions from Ms. Rod?
I'm gonna play to keep you busy.
Yes, yes, you do. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Keep sending in windowless rooms, it helps us.
So we now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Got a couple of.
It works up right here.
Got a couple of updates. Um, first, I'd like to call up Mary Dawsworth, our Park and Recreation Director, to give you an update on three grants that she's applying for in support of two projects. And it's through the Recreation and Conservation Office. And, um, this will actually also be part of our legislative agenda for the upcoming biennium when the Washington State Legislature, um, reconvenes in January of two thousand nineteen. So with that, Ms. Dawsworth?
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to share, uh, some grants that we're applying for. Uh, we've been pretty successful. We're always out there looking for partnerships and ways to help offset the cost of these projects. So, um, just as a, what we're currently working on, what you've approved and what we received, one point, almost one point two million in funding for is, um, Harry Todd Phase One. So we're in the process of putting that final scopeal work together, and that'll probably be coming your way soon. This is the current cycle for RCO grants, and they, they are the clearinghouse for so many different, um, uh, grant programs. The ones that we're looking at are the WWRP program, which is the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program. And so for Harry Todd, we were fortunate again to receive two grants. And so we're gonna be going for those two same grant programs, uh, for Phase Two. So Phase Two is pretty straightforward. There's a picture on the back. It'll be basically looking at, the, the two grants are Water Access and ALA. So of course, we always look at what the grant is, what the criteria is, and what we can be most competitive with. So, um, for the waterfront improvement project, again, prim, it's the same project, but two different grants. And we're fortunate to be able to match the two together, not all state grants you can match. So, um, Water Access would be to, uh, build a fishing pier and to fix and repair the finger docks out of Harry Todd Park. And then also add a restroom. Uh, typically, buildings aren't, um, fundable, but restrooms, maintenance facilities, the storage kinds of things that go with the project are. So we thought it'd be a good time to get that nineteen seventies-era bathroom that we have there that has, um, access issues and maintenance issues. It's big and it's old, and, uh, it's on a septic system. So Public Works will be bringing in a sewer line near the park, so the timing could be perfect. And it also shows efficiencies, not having to pay for a sewer line to the restroom, you know, decommissioning the septic tank. So there's a lot of good elements with that. And we're hoping that we will be successful with that. So you can see under Harry Todd Phase Two budget, that for the Water Access, there is not a ris, a limited amount that you can ask for. Um, and because they have a new program that says Harry Todd is in an underserved area, basically because of the poverty, uh, levels, um, we have, we don't, we could provide only up to ten percent match. So we're looking at matching, uh, so that's why we've asked for six hundred thousand with the five hundred thousand ALA grant, the city putting in a hundred fifty thousand in general fund, or wherever you guys take that from. Uh, and then A, ALA would be the maximum you can ask for is five hundred. So that's why we're matching it with the six hundred for the Water Access, and then again, the hundred fifty match, so. ALA, and they're both very, very competitive processes. Uh, with Water Access, the biggest deal is they go with seventy-five percent acquisition first, and then they go to development. So that's just how the state legisla, like, state legislature set that program up. But because this project is quite competitive, there's not a limit in the maximum you can ask for, uh, we thought it would be, uh, very competitive for this process. So those are the two grants, uh, that we're looking at for Harry Todd. And then the third project that we're applying for is Angle Lane. And, um, this would be at Harry, at, at Fort Silicon. And I'm seeing that the paragraph that I was sure that I wrote describing it is not in this report. So I wanted to share with you what we're doing. And although I, uh, put two photos there, I know it's a little bit hard. So I brought mine, handed it in now, so I can quickly show you what we're looking at. So basically, it's the Angle Lane parking project that we've got budgeted for two thousand this year, um, which we have, you know, right now, sorry, people in the audience. So this is where, you know, we're currently accessing the park because of construction. And so, um, thanks, Bill. And so we've put a temporary parking lot in there, which is actually working quite well. It's flat, it's very topog, with a topography, it's easy to do. So this would be to formalize that parking, fix the road all the way up here. It's a trail, so it fits under there. And then once you get up here, to look at, uh, some trailheads, some signage, and a restroom building. And the reason that we're looking at this now is, A, it ties very nicely into the water sewer project that we're working on, um, designing right now. Um, just parking lot, just a trail, it wasn't sexy enough for the grant project. And so they said, you know, what are some amenities that you might add to it? So the timing is great. You know, there's a real lack of facilities. The only bathrooms we have is here and here. So there's just this whole, you know, three-quarters of the park, there's not really access to a restroom building. So it's a perfect location. It's the location that we've identified in our master planning where it would be if we could do it in the future. We figured the timing was very good with the projects that we're working on. So again, there's that efficiency in showing, uh, that you can piggyback on another project. And it's probably the most requested thing we have at the park now that we fixed the road. And, um, you know, we've got those things, especially thinking, uh, near the dog park area. So, and we've topped a pop, they're interested in putting some money in there. Again, that shows partnership, and you get points for that. So anyway, there's, there's a lot of, uh, potential there. So we're looking at the, oh, I beg.
Go ahead.
Um, so for funding, you can see on here, the ci, we have a hundred and sixty budgeted currently in our, in our project funds to do that. We'd probably look at carrying those forward if we're successful. Looking at the grant request maximum is five hundred thousand with looking at, at lodging tax as a potential funding source. Because of all the big events we do out there, you know, we're always bringing in lots of Santa cans and things. And so the, the po, the potential of, of that being supported in that way might be good, so.
Would the paving of that portion of Angle Lane match what the city's planning to do from Silicon Boulevard down to?
Yeah, yeah. And it would probably occur about the same time. So it would really be a good time to do it all together.
And then bring utilities all the way down?
And bring utilities all the way down. And right now, Angle Lane is getting beat up a bit because, you know, all the traffic's on there now. So the condition of that road, which was primarily pedestrian, we do use it a few times a year for flushing traffic. You know, when it gets the weight and the activity that some of these other roads have had, you know, it's showing its wear.
So it says park entry sign here. Is it, is this anticipated being auto entry at the same time?
No, we'd still be looking at keeping it gated and having it be primary. But right now, there's just the old wooden rot, you know, sign. There's really no good signage down here to direct you to your pathways. Um, there's not good signage even up here to direct you where you're going. And so the idea is to be, to put some educational and directional sign as well as potentially, uh, a small gateway there as well, just to let people know.
You'd still be able to use the thing in an emergency, like it's always been.
Absolutely. We're designing it as a road.
Does it actually work?
Yeah, yeah, it does. And it. Yeah, yeah, it does, and it, you know, even at Summerfest, when we had a zillion people there, you can open the gate in a half an hour, you flushed out, you know, 3,000 people, so.
Yeah, it does help.
So we want to have that as the emergency access, as a potential alternative access like we've been able to do now, so we'll retain it in that same size and manner, but calling it a trail, so it's a project.
The...
From ATBY.
It says, but it would not be talking about undergrounding that power line and running parallel to it?
Not, that isn't a part of this budget at this time.
And just in the Harry Todd on the chart, just to, even though there are two lines with two totals of a million 250, it's only a million 250.
Right. Yeah, I was just showing the two different grant programs that we're applying for, but it's one project, one, yeah.
Is Phase One done already?
Oh, we're just doing the, getting the scope together to do the design. There was, we were working with another firm, we did the master plan, but they weren't able to do the total project, so we had, we had to go out, do an RFP and look for a new person, so we're looking, working with a company out of Olympia, Robert Droll, and several subs to do that. So that should be coming your way in the next several weeks.
Is the Angle Lane project in our TIP or part of the plan and the CFP, or do we need to put that in, or will we need to put it in?
Well, it is, because this is also Angle Lane, and so right now, from a planning perspective, it's in our master plan, so it is, even though this is the area that we're focusing on, because that would be tied up with another project that's already being funded by the state.
And what's your timing on the water and the sewer?
It's being designed, or in the queue to be designed, by our own Public Works Department, and working with Lakewood Water and Sewer Department, so that's in the queue to be designed this year, built next year. Permit now until, and then built next year. We have state allocation for that.
So what is the cost share with the sewer utility and the Lakewood Water?
On this project or this project?
On that project.
This project up here, which isn't a part of this? It is, the city will be bringing in water and sewer to here. Lakewood Water would be paying for like four inches of a, we'll do eight inches, they'll do four inches, because we need a 12-inch line, and the reason for that is, there's two reasons. One is that we can either have them pay for it, and then we have to pay these giant connection charges, or we can pay for the line and just hook up to the system that's there. So right now, we're doing that final consideration, we'll lay out all those options so we can clearly show, you know, you're paying this much for this or this much for that, but it's like $260,000 to hook up, so.
On a 12-inch pipe?
12-inch pipe is what they're talking about going from here to here. And then there'd be pavement restoration that we would help have them help cover the cost of, and so, again, we're trying to partner it, so.
Hopefully, they won't have to do the pavement restoration, since we're actually planning that before we redo the roadway, right?
Oh, we'd only do it once, yeah, we're not doing it twice, but, I mean, the pavement restoration, yeah, from here, yeah, all the way down. This would be kind of technically one project, that would be two, although we'd do it all at the same time, that would be the plan, so it's as efficient as possible.
So the sewer line, is the sewer line going to be, like in Silicon, we put sewers under the streets, and then we, and then the, then the infrastructure was gifted to the county?
I'm not sure how that's all gonna work.
Is this line going to be gifted to the county so that long-term maintenance is their responsibility in doing that, or is this going to be like, it's on our property, and it's like our, from the street to our house, even though our house is...
It's ours.
A half mile away?
It'd be a big, long side sewer, I guess, right? Is that what you call it? I'm not, I'm not that familiar, that's not my bag.
That, that's correct, and the city would be paying for it with the sewer dollars that, that, that we have. So we would treat it as a, like a side sewer, as the Park and Rec Director said? Because there'd be, there's nobody else hooking up to it except for city facilities.
My understanding of the money that we had gathered up for sewer projects was to do mains that then could be connected to, not for our own connection as a... It's associated with your time, is we're gonna use source surcharge or sewer availability money to put in a side sewer to a city facility?
Yes.
Any other questions from Ms. Dawsworth?
If there were no concerns regarding the resolution, we're hoping to split on the consent agenda next month, or next week.
Yeah, it's kind of surprising to me that you're asking for permission to ask for money, because you're so good at asking for money without permission.
It's a state law, I had to. Thank you very much.
Next up, I'd like to call up Becky Newton, our Economic Development Manager, and she's here with Bill Adamson, our SSMC Program Manager, as well as Kenan Williams, who's been outside legal counsel, has been helping us with this. And long story short, we have come to an agreement with Tactical Taylor to acquire two of the vacant lots that they own in the North Clear Zone. As I think the council's aware, this is part of our long-term strategy to acquire property in the North Clear Zone, so this is the first of many to come. And this is being funded with a state capital grant that the city received earlier this year. So with that, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Good evening. As Mr. Caulfield mentioned, we have Kenan Williams, who's been advising us on this project, and also prepared the real estate purchase and sale agreement that you have in front of you, as well as Bill Adamson, who's gonna lead off this discussion with an overview of the process of land acquisition in the Clear Zone.
Thanks for letting me be here tonight, and applaud your endurance. This is a complex project, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have two pieces for this that leads into this. One is an overall NCC funding update, and the second piece has to do with the JBLM Land Exchange Business Plan, which is very much related to what you're gonna be getting specifically from Becky. So with the $2 million that we got from the state capital budget, it looks like about 1.1 or thereabouts will be used for the purchase of two vacant parcels that are owned by Tactical Taylor. My role in this is to get the reimbursement from the Department of Commerce. To do that, we need a signed purchase and sales agreement, and the environmental site assessment that was performed at the city's expense. With that, I can itemize those expenses and then get the money from the state back into the city funds, funding stream. Couple of things have happened here. That $2 million has opened the door to other funding options through DoD. At a presentation given back in February at the ADC Conference in San Diego, I made contact with the Director of the Readiness Environmental Protection Integration Program, and she has agreed to provide matching funds for the purchase of Tactical Taylor, the facility, the building. That's predicated on the Air Force providing money, and then the REPI program would match the money that the Air Force provides. This is where it starts to get complex. In order to use the Air Force money this year, which would be O&M dollars, the city would have to enter into a cooperative agreement between the Air Force, the Army, JBLM, the city, and potentially SSMCP. Without that partnering agreement completed, we would not have access to Air Force O&M money. The drafting of that agreement has started, but it's in coordination, and you all know that we need this done by September to have access to the FY 18 dollars, which are somewhat plentiful, because the government operated under a CR for the six, first six months of the year, so we have an opportunity. However, the Air Force is using a figure of about 1.5 million dollars, is what they have as available, REPI would match that at 1.5, that would give us 3 million. The building appraised back in 2016, just shy of 5 million. And we all know that the land alone for those two vacant parcels is something just outside of 1 million, so we won't have enough money to buy the facility unless we can get them to come up to about 2.5 million, Air Force O&M, 2.5 million REPI dollars. That's something we'll be talking about on a trip back to DC in two weeks with the people that are all involved in this at Headquarters Air Force and Headquarters Army. And Mr. Tom Knight, who's the Chief of Staff at JBLM, is setting up a teleconference between the Air Force and Army entities that are based in San Antonio, and myself, to talk about the coordination needed for both the, the partnering agreement and the amount of money needed for this purchase of Tactical Taylor, the facility. Today, as Mr. Knight and I were coordinating this teleconference, we've heard about a new moratorium imposed by the Office of the Secretary of Defense on the use of DoD funds to acquire land in excess of 100 acres or in excess of a million dollars. This is a problem, because we know that the North Clear Zone project in total is something north of 60 million dollars, and since this building is about 5 million dollars, that would be a problem for us. There is a waiver procedure, the waiver has to go all the way up to the Assistant Secretary level, and it takes about 18 months to obtain a waiver. Mr. Knight and I are in coordination to talk with the people and the mayor and the city manager, we'll all be back in DC in two weeks to talk to the right folks about all of this stuff. There's an option that would preclude all this. That policy is for acquiring lands that would be owned by DoD. Just like the city is currently purchasing the two vacant parcels from Tactical Taylor with state money, it's not encumbered by the OSD policy, and the city will own that land until such time that it transfers it to JBLM if it chooses to. But from JBLM's perspective, all they care about that the Air Force, that the Clear Zone is in compliance with FLAA and DoD regulations. So we could acquire these properties, keep them under the city of Lakewood until such time that we get the waiver from the DoD, and then we could transfer the properties later.
That's a $5 million question.
That, that's a $5 million question, but it's the only option that Mr. Knight and I can think of right now that would let us stay on the timelines that we're talking about.
He's not holding a checkbook, though?
No, he's not. So, that's the update on the North Clear Zone. On the land exchange, we have a contract that's gonna become, get on the agenda here in the near future, that is for the JBLM Land Exchange Business Plan. This is one of the action items of the six action items that was approved by council back when we did the Action and Implementation Plan last May. This business plan is gonna come in at about 79,600. We're in the process, we have awarded the contract to White and Smith Planning and Law Group. He worked with us as a sub on the 2016 OEA grant, put together the Action and Implementation Plan. He'll be in town with his team next week to conduct some kickoff meetings. It's on the agenda for the 18th of June as an agenda item. It's tentative, however, because this, myself and the mayor, and I think the city manager, are all gonna be on airplanes getting to Washington DC that day, so we'll probably have to reschedule that somehow. That land exchange will determine several scenarios to bring to council for how to generate the most revenue from acquiring a 100-acre parcel of land just south of the Woodbrook Industrial Park that's being developed, that's adjacent to it. And JBLM is very flexible about the exact boundaries that we can use for that, so we're gonna do a site walk, a reconnaissance of the site on the 6th with JBLM personnel, the city manager, myself, and the Public Works Director, to determine what might be the best shape of that 100-acre parcel to acquire from JBLM. And then this report that's written by White and Smith Planning and Law Group will give council at least three scenarios to choose from as options to go forward and make a determination if this is economically beneficial way to pursue. So this would be a fourth funding stream for the Clear Zone. We've had Pierce County money for years, buying storage condos, and the mayor is very familiar with that. We have the state money, we have the Air Force O&M money, we have Air Force MilCon money, we're continuing to work on that track, and now we would have a land exchange revenue generated, and potentially a new site for some of the businesses that are currently in the North Clear Zone to relocate to in this new industrial business park on this 100-acre parcel. So with that, that's sort of the quick update, and I'll turn it over to the specifics of the land purchase right now, to Becky and Kenan.
So just really briefly, as mentioned, we do have $2 million grant that was awarded through the state, and so before you is a real estate purchase and sale agreement for purchase of two lots in the North Clear Zone that's owned by 107th Street LLC, which is Tactical Taylor. And just a couple of notes on this, the city has already done a lot of work on this, we've obtained a market value appraisal for the lots, which indicating a value of 1.14 million dollars. City has also gone through feasibility on the property, including a Phase One, unlimited Phase Two, and some additional sampling. We've also obtained some, some information on what it will cost in detail to get that cleanup done, and we've been also conferring with Pierce County, who has gone through the process and acquired land, which has been transferred, some of which has been already transferred to the federal government. And so, couple of conditions within the agreement, just to note, in Article Five, starting on page 109, talks about the hazardous substances in detail, and then another note on the real estate purchase and sale agreement, is there is an article in there with regard to eminent domain. We do have a willing seller, so likely will not have to exercise that, but that is part of the agreement, should we need to do that. And just defer to Kenan to add any additional comments.
Yeah, so the way we're treating this is, because it's gonna go to the federal government, we're treating this as if it was any other federal acquisition. So, I mean, on this first part, we really don't have any relocation assistance done, but we're already in the process of looking into that. So one of the caveats that I want to make is even though the building is $5 million, we don't know yet exactly how much it's going to cost to move all of that equipment and then get it back set up again in a new facility, and that's gonna be an additional cost that we're preparing for. We did put condemnation language in the purchase and sale agreement, because we would have the authority to do that, and it does provide with excise tax exemption and provides a 1033 exchange, which allows him, this 1033 exchange is similar to a 1031 exchange, but allows the owners of Tactical Taylor to keep the money without putting it in trust prior to reinvesting it, and they have an additional year to reinvest it. The timing is very important to the general manager of Tactical Taylor, Casey Ingle, and so we're trying to move promptly, but at the same time, protecting ourselves and making sure that we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves on this one, but allowing him the opportunity to move. Everybody knows it's a very aggressive real estate environment right now, that means it's aggressive for us and it's aggressive for him to find another location.
So, from the Google Earth shots, it appears that these properties, while vacant, are used?
Yes.
And is it anticipated that there will be continued use, and if we're the owner... Three questions, is it anticipated to be continued use? If there is, what are we gonna get paid for it? And thirdly, is that use necessary to the function of adjoining property?
So, part of it, part of that property is within the Clear Zone, and so it shouldn't be used. You know, there could be some sort of mild intermittent use, but it really shouldn't be used. And then the other question is, what type of use is putting on there? We don't want to have the current use on there, because the current use is likely to lead to greater hazardous material releases, you know, oil spills, things like that on the site. The rest of them are policy questions that I can't answer at this point.
What's a, what's a purchase and sale agreement provide?
Oh, you mean as far as, once they're gonna, once they're out, once we buy it, everything has to be cleared off of there.
And that is, and what's there now?
The current use right now is just sort of vehicle storage. The current use right now is just sort of vehicle storage and for a heavy equipment operator. And as far as I know, they're not even getting any income off of it.
But it's, but it's not, it's not any use connected with Tactical Taylor's operations?
No, no. No. We, I understand from talking to Casey Ingle that, I can't remember the name of the company, but it's somebody that has a personal relationship with that uses it for vehicle storage.
Do you guys think the hundred and eighty-five is gonna be enough for the estimate holdback?
So, we did the limited Phase Two, and that was the very first question. I said, I need to know what an estimate is, and so we had two estimates. One, there, the higher estimate was to actually physically go ahead and remove all the contaminated soil and then get it out of there. That was about, they said a hundred and eighty-five, and they, they estimated very, very high from what I got the impression of. There is also another method, which might be more effective, but it would take a lot longer to get it all done, which is approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Again, on the high side to estimate it, but...
Seems cheap to me.
Well, I, I know, but it really doesn't, I mean, I read it, and I started looking at it, and I said, does this really need to even be cleaned up? That was part of my question, because it is industrial land, it is going to be in the Clear Zone. And it was sort of like, I mean, Becky, you can, well, yeah, but it, it seemed to me like, yeah, you should clean it up, as opposed to it has to be cleaned up.
So what's the requirement for us to transfer to the feds?
Which is why we're, that was, Pierce County set that standard, which is why we're cleaning it up and we're having this holdback.
Yeah, because otherwise we're stuck.
Right, and the seller has agreed, that, that seems reasonable, and also it, it, in, in terms of future liability for the city, we determined that that would be the best route to go. And then we also conferred with Pierce County with regard to the cleanup costs, and theirs, when they did cleanup on properties, it was a larger scale, and it came in under two hundred thousand. So we feel like this is a good estimate to cover all of those expenses.
Gosh. And, and I wanna emphasize, Tactical Taylor has been incredibly cooperative in working with us on this one. I mean, obviously they're nervous about where their place is going to be, and they wanna definitely stay in Lakewood, they wanna stay near JBLM, but they've been just incredibly excellent to work with.
It, it doesn't help with the, with the folks at installations, but Colonel Sankis is going away. I had a nice opportunity to talk with General Tuck, who's eighteenth Air Force, about our efforts here, in fact, there really weren't any local funds, but we were doing everything we could, and seemed pretty interested and receptive.
Good. Well, we still have eight hundred thousand dollars of state money remaining to help us in whatever we wanna do. We have been contacted by Puget Paving, a lot that they currently own, that appraised back in twenty sixteen at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm not sure what it will appraise for now, but if it's about seven fifty, we might have enough money to pursue that.
They're kind of in the back end, it's not even up by two and three at the front, huh?
It's, uh, would be, if you're looking, if you're looking at the aerial shot...
Yeah.
It's on the right-hand side, like by number three, I think it is.
It's behind number three, it's behind their paving yard, right?
Well, they might not.
No, it's inside, it's to the inside. It used to be Sherman Brothers Logistics, it was purchased about a year and a half ago by Puget Paving, has a structure on it.
Okay.
There, there is a little bit of county money left, yeah.
For the storage, I think you're using that for the storage condo?
We have been, but there's, it's been, it's been drawn down, but it's not at zero balance. I don't know what it is right now.
There's seventeen storage condos remaining, and I think they go for about sixty-four to sixty-five a piece.
But they have, we've bought all the ones that are, they've been for sales.
I have a question, I guess maybe for you or all of us on the Tactical Taylor thing. I appreciate Bill, the, the options on the five million dollar purchase on the big building. We have so many other priorities, I would really hesitate to stick Lakewood's neck out for five million bucks unless we can figure out a better way to incentivize the feds to help fund their own damn problem. And I know we've done yeoman's work on this for years, and I would not, when I advocate putting five million dollars on the table unless I see more action from the feds.
Another angle on that, not, I'm not asking, I wouldn't ask for the city to pay the five million. What I would ask is that the city continue to hold title on that property, so it's not transferred to DOD. We could then use their funds to buy it, it's their responsibility, the Air Force has agreed to that.
How are we gonna get title from Tactical Taylor to us without remitting funds to Tactical Taylor for the five million?
Well, we, we will have to do that, and they would be federal funds, combination of O and M and rep. They would be, I would hope, we're gonna have to coordinate all this, willing to do that, knowing that that property's gonna be owned by the city rather than by the military installation.
So, so your premise is it's easier to get them to agree to that process than it is to process the waiver in this fiscal year?
Waiver's eighteen months or something like that.
So you think we could get that earlier than the eighteen month waiver period, is that what you're telling us?
I think we could get it by the end of the FY if we can get them to agree to that process.
Yeah, if they have the money that they have...
That might be okay.
That, that's, we don't hang out, yeah. You're committing this FY, why, essentially, you'd be saying, they would essentially give us a grant, that we would then do it, but with the consideration that we're going to transfer the property title back at some huge stake, kinda like what we're doing with Washington.
It may be that they give us the grant on the condition that we reduce, reduce it to unimproved level ground and restrict its use to, it's consistent with the Clear Zone. And then the transfer to them would be to get it off our books and away from our responsibility.
How do we get some certainty so that we're not hanging out there and all of a sudden they have a change of heart, or it just goes to the pitch?
They'd have to appropriate the money.
Yeah?
To grant it. My understanding is at the end of this, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it looks like because of a strange set of circumstances, the end of the year, there's gonna be money rattling in the pot at DOD, and O and M money, and that O and M money is a use it or lose it deal, and so, you know, those of us who've been there know the strange things that happen in September, where you're buying stuff you don't need and you don't trade it for stuff you do. So, here's...
The complicating factor that we're gonna be talking about in two weeks is that we have to get the Army and the Air Force priorities to align so that we are prioritized for that money, that five million. Right now, the Air Force is telling me they have one and a half million, rep would match that, so we'd be two million short. We have eight hundred thousand available from the state, that's still not enough.
Yeah. What gives us a warm comfy after having pounded this ground for so long, you've done yeoman's work, all of you guys have? What gives us a warm comfy though that these guys are gonna get the, the dollars that are needed by the end of fiscal year eighteen? They, they've been pointing fingers at each other for years as to financial responsibility.
The, the most positive thing is that the rep program is open to us again, and that was done because we got the state, DOD considers the state money non-federal matching funds, so we've checked the box, we've done everything we need. Our two million dollars gives us access to potentially sixty million dollars for the whole, they don't have to provide any more money. They have to come up with the right priorities to give us the funding.
So, that happened, the second thing was that they reevaluated their, their own interpretation of what rep could be used for. And that's, the, the rules haven't changed, but their internal interpretation of how they can use that has shifted, so.
I guess you can make a contingent offer, right?
Yeah, well, I, I mean, we're, we're not even close to buying the building yet, so, I mean, hoping that at some point...
Technically, we're four months from it.
Yeah, well, we're buying the, we're buying the land. The building, though, like I said, has a host of other issues, because we've gotta find out what the move costs are gonna be. And, you know, after going through and looking at it, the pictures in the appraisal do not do justice to the operation. It is a very extensive operation, all sorts of, you know, heavy-duty computerized equipment that does, I don't know if any of you have gone through it, yeah, it is an amazing facility, really. And I, it just, it makes me a little nervous not knowing what the move costs are gonna be, because I could see them moving well in excess of a million dollars.
Yeah, the, the implementation plan forecasted eight hundred and forty thousand, so that was in the plan that you saw last, last spring for relocation expenses for that property.
What's the next high value target to get rid of?
Gold in moving and storage.
Is that the Sherman Brothers one?
No, that's, I think it's number...
Nine.
Yeah. It's, it's shaded green. It's an, it's a, it's a Phase Two purchase, but it's close to the center line. And luckily, I think that property would also qualify for rep, because it's right on the line, it's right on the Clear Zone line, and that's something they're looking for.
Doesn't have to fall partially outside, because there's, the strange, the reinterpretation was if it, if it straddled the line, you could use rep for it, if it's all inside the line, you couldn't.
Right.
Fortunately, almost everything straddles the line, wherever we're chopping buildings in half to make it work.
Any other questions? We'll find out more in a couple weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to see you, editor.
Thanks, Mayor. A few more updates. The first is, is a follow-up to the TIP presentation earlier. We have, hopefully, we'll, if not sooner, but certainly no later than July second, we expect to give you an update on the Onyx Community Outreach, and that particular project is part of the July second city council meeting. Next up, I'd like to just recognize one of our police officers, Ken Henson, for his work with our explorers. He was recognized as the Washington Law Enforcement Explorer Advisor of the Year at the annual WASPIC Conference, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, and just a real strong positive reflection upon him and the Lakewood Police Department for all they do, and with our explorers, who are folks who are ages between sixteen and twenty-one, who typically have a desire to be a police officer and work in public safety, and they do a lot of great work here in the city of Lakewood as well, but just wanted to call out and recognize Officer Henson for that. You know, getting into the summer months, it's beginning to warm up, so a lot of boats out there in our lakes, and once again, our police department has been giving free boating classes. There's two more scheduled on Saturday, June second, and Saturday, June twenty-third over at the police department, and folks can sign up for that through our Park and Recreation Program on, online through our website. Number of recent city events that we've had some great success, the Math Relay, which was on May fourth, the city hosted that event once again this year, and there was eighteen teams comprised of over two hundred and thirty people, including not just the kids, but their parents and teachers, and it was a great, great success. Matter of fact, we could go over at the stadium next door, we could hear them over here at City Hall. The Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event, which was on Saturday, May nineteenth, we had about a hundred and ninety youth come out and participate in that, and also wanna thank the, the number of volunteers that came out to help pull that event and make it, make it happen. You know, the next major event, actually, I'll get to the farmer's market here, but the next major event is gonna be down at Fort Tillicum Park, which is Summer Fest on Saturday, July fourteenth. However, the next day, on Sunday, July fifteenth, our Parks and Rec Department is gonna have what's called Summer Synergy, which is gonna be really just kind of a kickback yoga, meditation, morning of movement event at the park, and kinda, it's a, it's actually a program that's actually been used by the military to help treat PTSD, and I'm not saying any of us have PTSD, but if you just wanna come, kick back and just relax, come on out on Sunday, July fifteenth, and just enjoy, enjoy yourself. There'll be some walking and such as well.
You're gonna do the dog, yeah?
Also, I'm sorry. The, the Park and Rec Department is also looking at some other community events later this summer, once the Jason Whalen Event Center is opened up at Fort Tillicum Park, commonly known as the pavilion in the park, about doing some, some summer concerts there. So hopefully, more, more, more to follow, more to follow on that. At your next study session on June eleventh, we're gonna bring back to you a real quick analysis that we did on, on sewers, and if you recall, you know, right now, our, our sewer program, even though we're not a sewer utility, we kind of act like a developer, and then we turn the infrastructure over to the county, and we got, I think it's ten remaining projects, and so the current process is that we design in one year, and then we build in the next year. So, for example, two years ago, we designed the last segment over in Woodbrook, and then we constructed last year. So this year, we're gonna begin designing sewer extension along North Horn Lane in Tillicum, and the next year, we'll build it. And so, under that process, given the cash flow, it's probably gonna take us until 2034 to get all of those projects completely constructed. So that's, you know, that's about, how many years is that, about fourteen, fourteen years, fourteen, sixteen years from now. The other option that we looked at was to issue revenue bonds to get those projects completed sooner, and sure enough, based on the cash flow, we could issue revenue bonds in a couple of tranches in the early years, as we look out into the early 2020s, and the projects would be completed six years sooner, by 2028. However, the debt service with that, with those revenue bonds would actually extend out into the mid 2040s or even the latter part of the 2040s, which would be fourteen to sixteen years beyond 2034, which under the pays-as-you-go program right now, it would be much longer, so it would actually be more costly. So, long story short, our recommendation is to continue with the pays-as-you-go system. The projects will still get completed, but they'll get completed a whole lot cheaper because by 2034, theoretically, you can do away with the four and a half percent surcharge, whereas if we do the revenue bonds, at least a portion of that surcharge would have to continue well into the 2040s. But again, we'll have the detailed analysis for you as part of your June fourteenth study session. We're also contacted on Friday by the Humane Society, as I think the council's aware, we contract with for animal shelter services, and, long story short, for the next three-year contract, our current contract ends at the end of this year, 2018, but for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, they're projecting that their costs are gonna have to increase by sixty-five percent. So basically, our costs, so over the, over the life of the three-year contract, our costs would potentially triple. So we're gonna be meeting with them and having a conversation with them, that that's not something that the City of Lakewood can take on immediately. We're also gonna look at alternatives in terms of what other types of agencies, whether private or nonprofit, can handle our animal sheltering needs. So, more to, more to come, more to come on that.
Julie Anderson wants to start her own.
Does she?
County's gonna roll it, but...
On your, on the dais, I placed a letter that we received on Friday from the representatives of the Cloverbrook Apartments that have proposed that two hundred and sixty-four, sixty-six low-income housing development over in Springbrook, and they are asking for the city council to expand your residential target area to allow their project to take advantage of the multifamily tax exemption. I know the council a couple of years ago, you know, had a specific discussion on the areas of Springbrook that you wanted a target for that, if you remember the butterfly effect, and then going across the street over to where the Lakewood Transit Center is, and so those are the areas that we've been focusing on. And, so I'll leave that letter with you, and at this point in time, I'll certainly follow council's direction if you want us to come back to you with, you know, what it would take to extend the exemption area over into that part of Springbrook or include all of Springbrook. But at this point in time, I'll just introduce it this evening and maybe at your next council meeting under either reports by the city manager or council comments, if you wanna give me certain direction on what you'd like to do.
Just to, you wanna incentivize...
And then as far as your calendar goes, just a friendly reminder, this Friday, from three to five, of course, we'll be recognizing our esteemed city clerk, Alice Bush, here, and... and, uh, there'll be a number of folks who will be attending who have worked with Ms. Bush over, over the many years here at the city. On, uh, Saturday morning, um, Dr. Claudia Thomas's memorial service will be at Harrison Prep at ten AM, and then there'll be a celebratory event at the McGavick Center celebrating her life, um, there, there, thereafter. On June fifth, next Tuesday morning at eleven AM, eleven AM, eleven fifteen or so, we will kick off the two thousand and eighteen Lakewood Farmer's Market here at City Hall. Um, and then next Thursday, June seventh, the, um, Senior Center is gonna be hosting their annual, um, open house from ten AM to one PM over at the, uh, Senior Activity Center on, on, on Lakewood Drive. And then lastly, um, the following week, on June fourteenth, on Flag Day, from eight AM to ten AM, the city will host its, um, annual developer forum over at the McGavick Center, and we'll have, uh, Congressman Denny Heck, who will either be attending or at least video inning, uh, video, video conferencing in, uh, for that event, and also Dr. Ali Maderos, um, will also be a, uh, speaker at, at, at that event, so should be pretty exciting, and, uh, so, um, so with that, Mayor, that's what I have, if there's any questions, I'll certainly try and...
Questions for the same editor.
That's right.
Right. Council comments, Mr. Volkey, Mr. Renshaw.
The Memorial Day event at, at Mountain View, uh, went well. The agenda, it was, our program was similar to what, to what passed years, weather was good. Very, very appropriate.
Ms. Barth?
I'll pass.
Ms. Moss?
It was a busy week for me. On Tuesday, I attended the farewell ceremony for Colonel Sankis at the Tacoma Golf and Country Club, and for the first time, I had the opportunity to go to this, this Columbia Park High School, um, memorial that they do, and it was, I was really impressed, it was very nice, well-done, and those students are just phenomenal, they do great things. They have, their, their leadership skills really show. And on Thursday, I attended a change of command for Colonel Sankis, as she relinquished her controls to Colonel Kern. And on Monday, I attended Memorial at Dupont, was not well-attended, um, some of them had the time law, so they came at one, it was over by twelve fifteen. That was, that was disappointing. And then I also attended the, uh, Memorial at, uh, Mountain View, and I had the opportunity to sit with the Golden Wives Club, Golden Wives of Tacoma, they are hilarious. They kept me laughing the whole time, they just, they just, they're just them, they just, so that was very exciting, but they wanted to, wanted to know if I would come and speak at that group, and I don't know if I could get through a, a serious conversation with those people, but it was fun, I enjoyed it, so...
Mr. Wheldon?
I'll pass in light of the time.
With the, the same events, Colonel Sankis, as, uh, Councilmember Moss, and the Arlington Project, um, I, I would appreciate it if we could get somebody in here to know something about acoustics on the sound. I don't think it's the microphones, but, you know, we have these flying wings up here, uh, or disemboweled wings, where there is just metal wings, which are four acoustics to put things down, and then we put the speakers on the other side, so everything bounces off, instead of projecting at the audience, it's bouncing off all the hardscape, and it's above the, the acoustical members up here that were meant to direct sound, so, uh, it, it's not the hardware, so much as the placement that makes it, I have a real, I have a real hard time hearing with the echo. It's not, it's not working, and we get constant complaints from the people in the audience, so, um, I think it's, it's, it's not the technical part of it, it's, we need somebody who, kind of concert kind of person, uh, it reminds me of Union Station. That train for Yacht La is arriving, you know, it's, uh, and bounces off all that hardscape, which is the worst place in Tacoma to have a way, so, um, we, uh, will recess to executive session for approximately twenty minutes to discuss litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one I, with legal counsel representing the agency, litigation which the agency is a party when, as public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal financial consequences to the agency. We will also, uh, discuss the performance of a public official. The council, uh, will return to adjourn and will not take any action following the executive session or recess. Benjamin Johnson? No. But you can't, yeah, but...
So, yeah, I, it's hard to tell without a map, what, what this is referring to, but...
But it's, it's farther over. Remember, we had that whole discussion where we limited the butterfly, and the edge was, we kept it on four acres, and said, well, the other side, where the butterfly was, if they're gonna take down the nasty mobile home park, but if it was something better, or, to you, otherwise, we don't want to get accidents in it, or massive low-income housing and even further skewer ratio.
Okay.
So, they can build it, but...
My thought would be replacing something crappy that might be worth doing, but it's...
I agree with you on the acoustics.
What?
I agree with you on the acoustics.
There's like stadium speakers now. Well, uh, Brianna? Could you RSVP regrets for me for the Army Ball, I'm gonna be back east. Thanks. Oh, and on the proclamation, uh, there's one factual here, uh, Claudia was the third mayor, not the second mayor. General Harrison and Doug for two years, then Claudia. And it says second, and then Doug came back for five. Also, if I'm reading, and I prefer that she, unless she, the families had a strong preference, call her first African-American female mayor instead of black mayor. And check the grammar on the run-on about all the boards and committees, because the Clover Park School District didn't really sound right there, so, thanks.